Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Japan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to introduce a new member of the ZBA, Mr. Anthony Daquanti, and the end, who was appointed, what, a couple of months ago. And because the March meeting, or the February meeting was canceled because of weather, this is his first time with us. I'd also like to make the sad announcement that Carmen Bucky will not be with us tonight. She's recovering from an accident. Carmen, if you're watching, we miss you. Get back here soon. As a result, Paul Lay will be, who's our alternate, will be a regular voting member for the entire meeting, should someone recuse themselves. Phyllis, where did Phyllis go?
Left.
Oh, okay. There's not a, there's not a spot for you? We should get, we should find another chair someplace. At some point, yeah, you should sit up here because we're gonna, we're gonna need you. Phyllis is another of our alternates. Okay. For those of you that are new to the procedure of the ZBA, we will take the applications in the order in which they're found on the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, there's one available next to Lisa Cobb, our counsel's For each item, we will begin with a public hearing. We'll ask the applicant to come forward, to be sworn in, and then to give a very brief statement of what the application is about. Members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. After they've asked questions, the floor will be open to anyone from the public that wishes to comment on that application, and that application only. You should know that if you're going to give testimony before the ZBA, you must be sworn in. In our proceedings, all testimony must be sworn testimony. Once we have heard all of the comments from interested people, we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item of the agenda. When we've finished all of the items, we'll return to top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. During this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public, though you are certainly welcome to stay and listen to our deliberations and our voting. As you can see from the agenda, we have a rather lengthy meeting tonight, so I would ask cooperation of everyone, if you wanted to address the board, if you could keep your comments to the point so that we can, we can move along. We want to hear from everybody, but we want to do this so that we're not here into the wee hours of the morning. Okay. Item number one, Leon Lee, 81 Buckingham Avenue. At the request of her attorney, she's asked that this item be adjourned to the next meeting, which would be April 13th. So, is there a motion to adjourn item number one to April 13th?
Both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item number two, Anthony Leo, 11 Spring Street. At the request of the applicant, he is asked that this item also be adjourned to the April meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn item number two to April 13th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item number three is an adjourned public hearing from the Salsa Restaurant, 2585 South Road. Is there anyone? Okay.
I'm sorry, this is a little late. Just call me. Please come in.
Okay. To be, to be perfectly honest with you, we have pretty much covered everything we needed in the public hearing. The only reason we adjourned it is that we are required to submit all applications to the county for comment. And at the last meeting, they hadn't responded to us. They have now. They've said that they don't have any concerns with this, so we-
We can do it?
We really don't have anything further-
Oh, okay.
-that you have to give us.
Okay.
Okay?
Then you can call the office in the morning.
And then just-
Yeah.
We can let you know what to-
Yeah, okay.
Let me do that.
So, thank you for coming, but, uh, so are there any comments or questions from anyone on the board?
A what?
We on salsa.
A what? I think, yeah, we're on number three, the salsa restaurant, and the only thing that was holding that up was, uh, was the county. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, so, we can act on this later this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I need to tell you that I need to recuse myself on items 14, 20, and 21.
14, 20, and 21. Okay. All right. So, for those items, Phyllis will be a voting member. And, uh, do you, do you want to just pull your chair up to the desk? I mean, you're, you're gonna be a member of the panel, so it just seems sort of odd to have you. Item number four, the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union at 4 Tucker Drive. Is there someone representing the Hudson Valley Credit Union? Okay. All right. And that's, same for items five-
That's a few of them.
And, yeah, items four, five, and, four, no, four, five, and six are all the, okay.
Just tell us what county said on these.
Yeah. Wait, Sandy, I believe everything was a matter of local concern.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we really don't have to worry about that. Okay. They may be late, so let's just move this to the end of the agenda, and we will, we will return to it. Okay. That brings us to item number seven, Hertz Auto Rental at 20 IBM Road.
Same representative.
Same representative, okay. So, in that case, let's wait with that one as well. Okay. Item number eight, Matthew Johnson, 190 North Grand Avenue. Good evening, sir. If you'll just have a seat, and if you'd just state your name into the microphone and then be sworn in.
Robert Patterson.
Mr. Patterson, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. And could you briefly tell us why you're seeking a variance?
We want to take down an existing 16-by-16 screened-in porch, put up a 20-by-22 one-story addition. We're close to the property line, and so we're requesting a variance.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions. It's gonna be right behind the existing dwelling that's there. It's not gonna, it's gonna have less encroachment actually than the actual primary portion of the house.
Art?
No question.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing.
Barry?
No question.
Phyllis? Tony? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 190 North Grand Avenue? Okay. Hearing none?
Okay.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Recusals? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, Michael and Adrian Haas, 4 Claudia Lane. And your name?
Michael Haas.
Mr. Haas, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. And I understand you also seeking a home addition?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us why it, why it's located close enough to the property line that you need a variance?
Um, the house already is, and our property kind of like, it goes at an angle, the property line does, so as the further you go back, the closer it gets to the property line. So it's in accordance, it's just a straight line back. And we just want to extend the master bedroom, and then put a bathroom and a walk-in closet back there. Initially, we're gonna raise the, and go up, it's just the costs were too expensive, so.
Okay. Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay. The, the addition, you said, is just gonna follow the line of the house back?
That's correct.
And when you build it, what, it will match the rest of the house?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Same siding, color, everything will be the same.
Okay. Paul?
No questions.
Okay. Phyllis? Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 4 Claudia Lane? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cousels? Okay. Item number 10, John and Maria Rautenstrauch at 7 Old Farms Road. Okay. Each of you would just identify yourselves.
My name's Robert Lutz.
John Rautenstrauch.
Mr. Lutz and Mr. Rautenstrauch, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are
subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. So if you'd just briefly describe-
Yep.
...what your application is about?
Yeah. Mr. and Mrs. Rautenstrauch are interested in extending the front portion of the home in an effort just to ease their standard of living, to redo the bathroom as well, to make it easier on a daily basis, plus be able to bring the laundry upstairs. And in the design aspect of it, we try, in order to stay away from the side, we stayed consistent with the left side of the house to bring the addition forward in the design as to not impede any further than what used to be the setback. I guess during zoning reform, it got reduced. And then just be able to marry it into the home and cosmetically, aesthetically, just make it all match.
Okay. Just one brief question. Are you the architect, or?
I'm actually, I work for DBS Remodel. We're a local residential remodeling company-
Okay.
-that have worked with the homeowner to be able to design it.
Okay. So you've been involved in the design?
Yes, sir.
It just, it just wasn't clear just what your relationship with-
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay. Because I noticed the Freeman is the architect.
They print, yep.
Okay, okay. All right. So it's an addition that will come to the front?
That's correct. To extend the existing bedrooms further forward to give more room for the master bathroom for accessibility needs.
Okay.
And then there's another bathroom in there, in front of that, which is the common, which then would also give the freedom to be able to bring the laundry upstairs and kind of modify the existing footprint.
Okay. Okay. I've been given some correspondence on this, so let me just read it into the record now so everyone can have it and, and comment if they wish. Dear zoning, I'm writing to inform you that I oppose the proposed addition to the front end of 7 Old Farms Road. Number seven stated that his addition will enhance the surrounding property, but that is simply not true. Observing the houses on Old Farms Road, one will notice that while each house has its own distinct character, the front of the houses are relatively symmetrical with respect to the surrounding houses. With this proposed addition, number seven's house will extend past house number five, my residence, ruining the aesthetics of the surrounding area, directly impacting the appearance of my residence. Furthermore, the addition will block the view of the road from number seven's side, posing a threat when backing out of my driveway. Moreover, house number seven is already in violation of zoning rules, as his house is 14 feet from my house, while the required limit is 20 feet. Therefore, this addition will extend a portion of the house that is already in violation of zoning laws. I have no problem with number seven building additions on his house, however. This particular addition will negatively impact my property and the surrounding area. If number seven wishes to add a room to the back of his house, I would not oppose his decision. However, an addition to the front of the house will ruin the symmetry of the street, the aesthetics of both our homes, and pose a driving threat. Considere, Aruna Bakru, 5 Old Farms Road. Okay, so that becomes part of, part of the record.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, okay. All right. So she is in, in the audience, and if you wish to speak later, you certainly-
Yes.
So, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
This addition is really going in the front portion of the house. So my question is, why not put that addition in the back of the house? Is there some reason?
Well, I, is there a reason? No. I mean, I guess we, you could, okay. It's a possibility there's an existing deck in the back, which is attached to the, their existing screen porch, so I guess they were interested in perhaps preserving that aspect of it. But to answer your question, is it possible to also explore other options in the back? Absolutely.
And the addition, this is the addition that they're putting on, right? That, the one that says master bedroom, bedroom two, and bedroom three?
It is the, hold on one sec. That's correct, two and three, which extend 10 feet closer to, from the front yard, which I believe their setback existing was 53, which still allows for over 43 feet. Like, if the argument was I had to try to back out of your driveway, I still think even after you add the addition, the 40 additional feet is more than adequate to try to back out of your driveway.
So it's only going 10 feet from the front of the house?
10 feet, that's correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. We wanted the time here.
12 feet, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because bedroom number two extends two feet further than the bedroom number three.
So basically, what you're doing is you're adding three bedrooms and-
Well-
Two baths? It almost looks like two baths.
Ma'am, there is, there is still, there is two bedrooms currently, there was two baths currently. What we're doing is enlarging the one bathroom, which forces it into where the other, the second bathroom was, the common bathroom, which in turn pushes the one bedroom, which is labeled bedroom number two, out to increase the first bedroom, the master bath is being enlarged, so which pushes out the second bathroom toward the street more, and now we're basically moving the second bedroom closer to the street because it's a, like a domino effect. You increase the one and you had, and it just propagates through. There was two bedrooms, there was three bedrooms in the house, there's still gonna be three bedrooms in the house. We're enlarging the, making the bathroom more, more accessible.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Art?
No, I think Betty covered my question.
Let me, let me just note for the record that according to the drawings, if the proposed addition were added, it would be 47 feet, more or less-
That's correct.
-from the, from the street.
Correct.
Okay. And according to the zoning code, the front yard setback in that area is 30 feet, so-
Okay.
It, it would be in, in compliance with the code. The other question I had was, I noticed that in the front, in that front corner right now, there's, there are a couple of trees, and there's some landscaping. If, if an addition were built, would that landscaping be replaced? Would anything more be added along the side?
The, the tree on the corner, as you're looking at the house on the left side, that has been coming down piece by piece. That's going to be removed, and eventually we'll expect to put some shrubs in, or flowers in front of the, which was the house where the, front of the house was, just move it out.
Okay. Okay. Paul?
Nothing.
No question.
Okay. Phyllis? Tony?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address number seven, Old Farms Road? Yes, ma'am. You, you need to come up-
Microphone's right over here.
Be, be sworn in and speak into the, into the microphone.
Okay, sure.
Everything has to be on the record.
All right, no other problem. No, just me, I don't.
Yes, if you just state your name and then be sworn in.
My name's Dr. Aruna Bakru. I am in, I'm the owner of 5 Old Farms Road, and I'm the one most impacted by-
All right, wait, wait, wait. Dr.?
Aruna Bakru.
Bakru. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Now you can go.
All right.
So, um, so, you know, the one thing I said was that it does violate the character of
the street, you know, because none of the other houses stick out. However, you know, I am most impacted because this, this addition that they're proposing, 12 feet, as they say, is, is going to stick out like a sore thumb. All the homes have similar setbacks. I drove down that street, and all the homes on Old Farms, or at least, you know, Old Farms goes around, so at least down our end of the street, they have similar setbacks. And also, you know, it's not that we've got tons of acres, or even an acre, you know, we're talking, they're already, they're saying 12, they're saying 14 feet. It, it could be less, I'm not sure that it really is 14 feet, because I looked at an older zoning map where, and I have a copy of that here. This is an older one, this is prior to the, the zoning being changed, and according to this map, there was 17.85, I think, I can't, I'm not sure I can do that, from the house number nine. However, when the, everything shifted, it shifted over around three feet, roughly. I don't remember the exact amount, but it was roughly about three feet. So they're about 21 feet from the house number nine, and they are closer to me now by, you know, 12 or 14 feet. They say 14, so we'll take it at 14, but, so they're really close to me. And with this thing sticking out, and then shrubbery and other stuff, I mean, it's just going to, it's really going to not just impact the appearance of my home, and it's also going to impact my backing out of my driveway, so, you know, they have many other options. I'm not, I'm not denying them building. They can build in the back, they can build above, they can build on the other side, it's, they can even build on the back towards my side. I have no problem with that. It's just the front is an issue, is, it's a huge issue, actually. Because it's, you know, like I said, again, it's impacting the character of the street, it's impacting me, it's impacting the driveway, you know, I've already said all of these things. You know, the, the facts, I'm not sure that they are correct, what, what they've stated in terms of the map. So that, those facts have to be determined, because like I said, I have a copy of an older, and it says that it was 17.85 feet from house number nine, and that was prior to it being moved over by three feet. So if you add three plus whatever it was to the 17.5, so the, the entire, and on top of that, you know, 12 feet is a lot. You know, they're already claiming to be 14 feet away from my house, now they're gonna stick out 12 feet more? So what am I gonna do? Go back all the way to the end of my driveway and look at the, you know? And not to mention that it's really going to look ugly. It's going to stick out like a sore thumb. So I, I strongly oppose this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay. If not, okay, thank you. Betty, did you have some?
Yeah, I, I have one more question. Is there, for the applicant, is there some reason why he doesn't put it in the back? Is there something back there? Is it-
Should have. Had the deck back there.
A what? Yeah. Yes, should be.
We have a deck. We have a deck.
It's not working.
Turn it on. Worked though. We have a deck, there it is. We have a deck.
And the deck goes all the way across the back?
We have a 16, we have a screen porch-
Oh, nice.
And we also have a deck in back of the, the primary bedroom.
This is the back, right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, never mind, answers my question.
So otherwise, if we put that on and brought it out, then we'd only have, we'd be blocking our screen porch. If we just extended it out the back, we'd be blocking the screen porch, and we'd only have like four, four feet of access to the outside. That's why, we did look, actually, look at that, and we said, does it make sense to rip up the screen porch and then enlarge the, move the deck and scarge the screen, the screen portion? Didn't seem like it made any sense to do that.
May I say something in response to that?
Okay, very briefly.
Yes. Basically, you know, they're concerned about the, the cost of having to move the deck, and they don't, you know, the, they're, they're concerned about, oh, it's going to block our view. Well, it's blocking my view, so, you know, it cuts both ways, and it's in the front. If they want to do this, I mean, like I said, I'm not opposing it, but I just don't think it should be in the front, and it should be where they want it to be, and it's already too close to my house. It's, it's supposed to be the, it's only 20, it's supposed to be 20 feet from my house, and it's already under 20 feet, way under 20 feet. I don't even think it's 14 feet, it's probably even less than that.
Okay. Let, let me just point out that many, many houses in the town of Poughkeepsie are in situations where the side or the rear lot lines are too close. This has to do with the fact that when many of the houses were built, there was a different zoning code, there was a different, the lot sizes were smaller, and when the, when the code was changed, suddenly, they all became non-conforming. So there, there's nothing particularly unusual about this, what, you know, what you're, what you're arguing, and, and, and we hear your argument-
Yes.
-is that, you know, this, this does nothing to, to improve the situation, and from your point of view, makes it, makes it worse.
It makes it a lot worse.
Okay.
I do have a couple of things I would like to, my, my lawyer gave them to me, these were a couple of cases that were, you know, ruled in the same, similar situation, if you would want to present them.
If you would give those to our counsel, and she can, she can take a quick look at them and advise us if, if they're relevant. We probably won't really consider that until our deliberation phase, but if, if they're relevant, we certainly would, would like to hear.
I have one more question for the doctor.
Sure.
If I'm looking at number seven, are you the house to the left, if I'm standing in front of number seven?
Yeah.
This is you over here.
Yes.
Yes.
Facing number seven, I'm, if you're facing seven, I'm the house to the left.
So closest to number seven is your garage?
Yes.
Right. So I'm guessing that you wouldn't be missing any scene or anything from the garage view, so it would be further over yet, to the left?
It's a, it's a matter of, A, the appearance and the conformity of the- It's a, it's a matter of, um, A, the appearance and the, the conformity of the street, and, and especially my house, and also backing out would be problematic for me. Because it's stick, going to stick out quite a bit, and it's extremely close to my house.
And who belongs to the fence, you or the applicant?
He, the fence, he put it up, yes.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address number seven, Old Farms Road? Okay, if not, um, are there any further questions from the board? Um, any, any comments that applicant wants to make? Okay. Um, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you all very much.
Number eleven, Daniel DeWitt, seven East Dogwood Drive.
Is there any, oh, there you are, sir.
What?
Okay, if you just state your name into the microphone.
Daniel F. DeWitt.
Mr. DeWitt, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and, um, this concerns a fence?
Yes, sir.
Um, and the code says that in front of the house, the fence can only be three and a half feet high, and you want a six-foot fence. Could you tell us why?
Yes, sir. Well, the, eight years ago, I erected the fence, and nine years ago, my wife had a brain aneurysm, so she became disabled. So we put the fence up for her so she would have her privacy coming in out of the driveway, and it's been there eight years, and I had no idea that, because it had to be a certain height or whatever, I kept thirteen and a half, almost fourteen feet from the road, and, um, when the guys put it in, they had no, you know, they didn't tell me I needed a permit or anything like that, so I, I didn't know. I thought that if anything, if somebody's going to do my, put up my fence, they're going to tell me, well, we need a permit. I had Adams look at it, Adams didn't say anything, and I had another individual do it because it was a cheaper install, but it's a vinyl fence, it's decorative fence, and it's, uh, six feet tall.
Christine?
So we're talking about the existing fence that's there?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Betty?
Well, when you're out there, the fence is big, and it's really quite obtrusive, so I'm trying to figure out how this benefit to your wife.
Well, it's along the driveway, and I also planted bushes, you know, in front of the house there by the, uh, patio, um, which I understand, you know, she's in a wheelchair and she's, you know, um, so we erected, I even asked my neighbor, and he said, Mom, I got, I have no problem with it, so it's along his driveway also, so for eight years, we, nobody's ever had a problem with it.
The impact to the view of the road from either driveway when you're backing out?
No, sir.
Your fence stops, what, about fifteen feet from the road, it looks like?
Yes, sir. Roughly? Yes, sir.
And where, where is your garage?
I don't have a garage, sir.
Oh, so you just pull up to the side of the house?
Yes, sir.
You pull back alongside the house?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have anything else right now, Jim.
Okay. So, so i, in effect, the fence divides, it, it looks like it's one continuous, um, asphalt driveway.
Yes, sir.
And then the, the fence just kind of go, and that's not caused any trouble?
No, no.
Shoveling snow?
No, no.
Okay.
Because no matter how we look at it, our driveways are pretty close together, so no matter, even with or without the fence, we've got to shovel it away from that, either each other's driveway, so.
Okay. Okay, um, Paul?
I don't have any questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
Billis, no.
I do that all the time. Why? Okay, Tony?
No questions.
At least I got. Okay, um, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address, um, seven East Dogwood Lane, or Drive? Okay, um, if there's no other questions, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Item number twelve, uh, John and Mary Ann Clark, two Jordan Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Alfred Capelli Architects.
Mr. DeBelli, did I say it right?
Capelli, close enough.
Capelli, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so if you want to just briefly describe the application?
Sure. We submitted a little narrative, don't know if you had an opportunity to take a look at it. We have a, um, nineteen sixties split level, looking to put an addition out the rear of the lower main, living room, dining room, kitchen area. We're in a four-acre zone, which evidently had been changed at some point in time because all the lots in the neighborhood are half-acre lots. So, everything we are looking to do there, where we don't meet the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay.
Pretty much that's it. We can't put the addition anywhere else, because the living room and, uh, the living room's in the front, kitchen and dining room is in the back, and that's what we're looking to expand out to, so we don't have any other alternatives.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. Um, and it's a corner lot?
Corner lot.
So you have the two front yard situation?
Sure, which complicates things, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Paul?
There's a fence along, uh, Channingville?
Right.
Yes.
Is that going to be maintained?
Yes.
That's all I have. Larry?
No questions.
Billis? Tony?
No question.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at two Jordan Street? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item thirteen, U-Haul located at twenty-one seventy-five, twenty-one eighty-five South Road. Okay, so if each of you would just state your names for the record?
Jessica McEwan.
Ted Hardy.
Mr. Hardy, Ms. McEwan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and before you begin, wha, what is the relationship of each of you to this application?
I'm from Fast Signs, we're going to be, um, installing the, the signs on the building.
Okay.
I'm the owner's representative and director of facilities for U-Haul International for this district.
Okay, okay, all right. So if, if you want to just quickly explain why you're here?
We are looking for, uh, variance for extra square footage for signage on the front of the building.
Okay, and you've submitted?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and just so we, we understand, it looks to me like there are three separate components to this. Um, you want a, um, a front wall sign, hundred and eighty-five feet where one hundred square feet is allowed, um, two more wall signs, um, and, and only one wall sign is allowed, each of the signs are sixty square feet, and then a directional sign, and the directional sign is, is around the side, right?
I don't remember.
That one, I wasn't quite sure exactly.
Are they talking about the directional or the, the existing one that's already on the road?
Yeah, it says one, one directional sign of thirteen point five square feet.
Stickers on the windows?
Oh, oh, that's an awning.
That's an awning.
No, 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 and that's fine.
Apparently, there's a, a sign over the door, is that what we're talking about?
Load, unload.
I think it must be.
Ah, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I apologize.
So it's on the south side of the building?
Correct, uh, on a new door that we've had installed.
Yes, yes, okay, all right, just, I just want to make sure we're all talking about same things here, okay. Um, Christine, any questions?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Betty?
Um, okay, over the front door, it says U-Haul, and it has all these little square boxes, are they nu, numbers related to where you find storage?
What are they?
What are they?
Strictly for decoration.
They're for decoration, ma'am, they're, they're simulated locker numbers, so if you would have, if you would have a storage unit in our facility, your locker number could be ten fifty-seven.
You'd never guess that.
It's actually quite confusing, our address is confusing enough, we're actually twenty-one eighty-five, twenty-one seventy-five is the building next door that I also own, it's the Bonefish Grill, but they have merged our two addresses together, so numerically speaking, there's a lot of confusion there.
All right, because I was asking that, because as soon as you look inside the front door, it gives you all the directions as to where the lockers are.
Correct.
So, um, would you feel bad, because I, I see no.
No use.
No, um, need for those boxes, they kind of confuse me.
It's, it's actually, uh, it, it's a standard business model, we have nationwide, it's, it's our new branding, it's to show simulated storage lockers on the front of the building, um, no other company does it, it's, it leaves it open, so if somebody's driving through the parking lot, right off the bat, as well as looking in the windows, they can, they can look and see what kind of lockers we have.
Well, you can see that without looking at these, I mean, it's all glass, you can see.
Correct, tho, those size that we have, the larger ones, are actually on the elevated second floor that we've installed inside the building.
And, and the twenty-four-sevens storage signs, you want them to either side of this big sign?
Yes, ma'am.
And plus, when you enter the front door, there's some signage in the window there that is kind of repetitive, because isn't that what it says on the door?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, it says U-Haul twenty-four-seven, welcome, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll let it head that way.
All right.
I have to follow Betty up on that one, that, those big orange signs, I don't understand how people know what you're going to be, you've got a monument sign that's going to be up, you've got U-Haul, um, storage, or something, instead of those signs, why wouldn't it just say U-Haul Storage or something like that, instead of those orange blocks?
Again, uh, i, it's, it's a standard operating business model that we have, it's just, it's our national branding sign that we have throughout the nation.
The signs can be changed, we know that from other companies that have come in, that it's not, it's not written in stone, correct?
Correct.
And then again, you have twenty-four-seven over the door, and then you still want two large twenty-four-seven wing signs. Why do you need so many signs saying you're open twenty-four-seven?
Uh, the wing.
I mean, you're only, you're only like, well, hundred, not even a hundred feet from the road, I don't think.
Correct, while the, the, the sign that's currently, um, in the windows, they're actually laminate signs, um, the ones we're looking for the application for, elevated up on the side of the building, and they're illuminated by the ground lighting that was there.
Well, again, why do you need two large signs that say you're open twenty-four-seven? I mean, you're a, you're not a, I'm not going to be riding down the road and say, oh my God, there's U-Haul, I'm going to stop in. You know you're going to U-Haul Storage, right? I mean, it's not something you're going to do on a whim typically. Am I not correct?
Possibility, you might, you might forget and need to buy a box.
I doubt it.
Just happen to have your couch in the trunk and wanted to drop it off someplace.
You never know, you never know, I mean, when you're online at checkout, that pack of gumstang in front of you is, uh, you know, pretty tempting sometimes.
Um, the other question I also have is, you know, you have opposite, a competitor next door?
Correct.
Who has one sign, and they seem to be doing fairly decent business, they have a monument sign and one wall sign high in the building. Um, can you tell me why you feel you need more, so many more signs, and so much bigger signs than what they have?
Than a competitor?
Hmm.
That's kind of rhetorical, wouldn't it be?
Not really. Not really, since you're, I mean, you're both the same distance from the road roughly, you're both the same, in the same business. I know, I know you're, you're beating the crowd for the same dollar.
Correct.
But, storage is storage, and, you know, I know you'd rather have their money, but again, what, convince me why you need all these extra signs?
Again, it, it's, it, it just falls back on what I said earlier, it's, this is what every building that we've done, when we've purchased a building, um, we've made them to look. If you look throughout the country, they're virtually identical.
Okay.
We actually, the, the original business model for this building, um, actually said self-storage on one side and boxes of moving supplies on the other side, and it was, it was just too much information, uh, when you're driving down or driving north or south on Route nine, to have to read all of these words, I mean, you know, it, it's a total of around fifteen to eighteen words. You don't want to be distracted that much from driving, so, you know, I had taken under advisement from, uh, from executives to change it so both wings were identical, so it was a little simpler to read.
That's all for now, Jim, thank you.
Okay, if, if, if I've done the math right here, um, the, the U-Haul is about seventy-five square feet, the, uh, the, the logos are a little less than ninety-five square feet, um, you haven't explicitly given us the dimensions of the climate controlled, but I kind of did, did the math, and it looks like that is about fifteen square feet. Is that, am I in the right ballpark?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the two twenty-four-sevens, um, self-storage are each sixty, okay, so the, the total brings you to over three hundred square feet?
Yes.
Okay, and the code is a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I, I think I share some of the other comment, it's just too much. Um, it's a big building, there are some things you need to say, I can understand, um, people seeing U-Haul probably associate that with something else. Um, so, so you probably do need to have something in there, twenty-four-seven self-storage probably is just about as concise as it could be. Um, but, hav, having said all that, um, seems to me three hundred square feet is too much. Um, I could see a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty square feet, um, you know, I, I too, I'm not quite sure why you need to repeat, um, why you couldn't have twenty-seven self-storage on one side and climate controlled on the other, and then have U-Haul and then maybe just storage or, or, or something like that. And I too, I'm, I must say, um, you know, with all due respect to, to, you know, the suits at U-Haul corporate headquarters, I didn't have any idea what those logos were, not a clue. I thought it, I thought it was an address, and that you'd gotten it really wrong. Um, I'm sorry, I just, it, you know.
We were guessing.
It doesn't. We were guessing.
I've rented, I've had a storage unit before, so I guess I knew what, you know, just because of past experience.
And, you know, we, we go look at a lot of signs, but this, this, and really, we sat in the, uh, out in front and looked at that, and looked at each other and said, what in the world is that? what in the world is that? Um, so, you know, from my point of view, it's not working, why put it up there? Um, so that, you know, I, it, it seems to me at a minimum, getting that out of there, that reduces your, your total square foot, um, quite a bit, um, and I think makes it more in keeping with some of the other buildings along there, I mean, one of the nice things about Bonefish, um, the building to the south of you, um, they're attractive buildings, they're not, they're not oversigned, um, they, they look classy.
You come up with a weekend crew, because we didn't have any problem figuring out what those things were.
You did. Yeah, I don't know, I guess, we, we go on trips in two teams, that's clearly the smarter team, so, oh, yeah.
But, um, I have one concern, I would like to see, are, first of all, you open?
No.
Okay, so I'd like to see a rendition of what would comport with the zoning, typically when we look at signs, we want to see something that comports with the, with the code, and to show if that is inadequate in some way, and then a rendition which you provided of what you're looking for, and then perhaps something more in line of what the chairman is suggesting, is that possible for you to do, or do you want us to vote tonight?
No, I can definitely take care of that.
Okay.
Develop a couple courses of action.
Primarily, you know, uh, clearly one of the course of action would be to lose those four squares.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see what it looks like.
Okay.
I personally don't like them, so it's no problem.
Jim, could, could I request, I mean, could we request, instead of those four squares, we have your twenty-four-seven wing signs, what would it look like under U-Haul?
And remove them from the wings, so have nothing there, because in the past, that building did have, uh, in the past, when that building was Lazy Boy, it did have signage on both wings.
Yeah, it did.
Well, the wings, it is a big building-
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm okay with something on the wings, because it's pretty bare.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanted to limit it to, I, I thought there was-
Mr. Price would like to see, so if you can bring-
That's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, but play around with it a little bit, let's see what, um, you know, like I say, may, maybe you don't have to do the same thing on each side, uh, maybe there's a way of breaking up.
Yeah, not having the same thing, that's why we, we, we thought it was too much information, you know, so somebody would be looking, they left the entire way they're driving, you know, to have to read all of these words.
Well, you've got the same number of words up there, I mean, you've still got the U-Haul, the climate-controlled, the twenty-four-seven self-storage, I mean, you've got, that's all there now.
Yep.
Um, eliminating one of the twenty-four-seven self-storage may allow you to enhance the climate part, now, I, you know, I, I, you know, you're, you're the, you're the people that market this, so I'm not going to try to tell you what, what to do, but, um, the, I think they're just ways of making it attractive and informative without three hundred square feet.
Okay.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, Paul, do you have?
No, I'm, no, that's fine.
Larry?
I, I don't know if you were being facetious in that, if there wasn't another storage facility next to you, would the signage be different?
No.
So I said, no.
Okay. Tony?
If I could just advise the board, this is Lisa, that one of the other issues that the applicant should consider is the detriment to the neighborhood properties if the signage that you were looking for were allowed, and your application doesn't really provide us any information about what the neighboring properties have in terms of signage, so if you could supplement that for, in terms for the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, as I understand it, um, you'll, you'll come back with some, some new renditions?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, right now, we just simply adjourn this to our next meeting.
Thirteenth, right?
Any other questions, comments, people want to make before we go? Okay, um, is there a motion to adjourn item number thirteen to the April thirteenth meeting?
Some who?
Um, favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals, okay, so we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am number fourteen, Marist College, thirty-three ninety-nine North Road.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing.
Okay, and so, Phyllis will be a, a voting member on this one.
Good evening, for the record, my name is John V. Andrews, Jr.
Mr. Andrews, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you got?
I do, yes, ma'am.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Understand.
Okay, and you're the consulting engineer, professional engineer?
Yes, I am a New York State Licensed Professional Engineer, I'm with the firm of Rody, Soika, and Andrews, located in Poughkeepsie, New York, and I am appearing on behalf of Marist College this evening, there is assigned, uh, permission for me to do that in your packet.
Fine.
Um, Marist is seeking a variance for a forty-foot front yard setback where fifty-foot is required, uh, this is for the Marist College North Campus Housing Project, the Marist College North Campus Housing Project is a seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-bed, uh, project to be constructed in two phases, phase one, buildings A and B is about four-hundred-and-eighty some odd beds, that will occur in the, remember the old bank building that used to be on the north end of Marist College campus, that will be one building, and there's another parking lot to the west of that, at the north end of Gartland Commons, that will be the other building that's part of phase one, once those buildings are completed and occupied, phase two will take place, which is the demolition of the Gartland Commons housing complex, and the replacement of that complex with additional beds and some classroom facilities. This project was the subject of a environmental review as a type-one action, but, before the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board, the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board issued a negative declaration for this project on January fifteenth of this year, the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board also issued conditional final approval, uh, site development plan for this project, uh, at that same meeting. The reason we're here, if I may, as you all know, Marist College, this is the North Gate at Marist College existing, this is Route nine, for almost the entire frontage of, of Marist on Route nine, the property line generally runs parallel to Route nine, if you notice just north of the North Gate, there is a pull-off for use by the buses, when the DOT created that pull-off, they created a little bump-out in the front of the Marist College property, it jogs in at one end about twelve feet, at the other end it jogs in about fourteen feet, and it's about seventy-foot in length, our first building is proposed to be in that parking lot, the building has a uniform flat front, at either end, it's between fifty-six and fifty-four feet, set back from the right-of-way, it complies, but because of the existence of that bump-out, there's a slight bump where it goes to be forty feet, we looked at kind of compressing the building, to be blunt, you compress the building, you lose beds, um, they needed the number of beds to, 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 um, fulfill a variety of functions, the first was to replace Gartland Commons, the second was to bring in students who currently reside at the Residence Inn, back to campus, and the third was to provide additional beds for students who want to live on campus, so, um, we tried to maximize the number of beds, the other thing is, if you're familiar with Marist, there's the main road that runs down there, we wanted to keep that in place, so that we minimize the disruption to the students who are going to reside in Gartland while this is being built, so, compressing the building didn't work, we looked at the property line frontage, and that is the only place along Marist where there's this little jog, and we said, well, we can meet every place but right there, we would respectfully request a variance, that's why we are here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Christine, question?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Um, I, we were out, had a look at it, quite frankly, I can't see that it makes this bit of difference in the world, but, uh, Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, anyone in the audience wish to address?
Jim, I do have a question, but it's not on the building, can I ask a question then?
Yeah.
The, the road, the old access that, that was across from Fulton, the one that you closed off with the gate?
Yes, the main entrance.
Is that still going to be closed, or you make, this looks like it's going to be open again?
No, no, the main entrance to Marist College is, is-
Still going to be down?
We have two entrances, the south entrance, which was considered the primary entrance, and then this north entrance here, which is going to remain unchanged, there is no plans, we can never, and I use that in quotes, reopen the main gate, because that was one of the concessions from DOT, in terms of creating the underpass situation, they wished us to close that gate.
Just, I just spotted that, I'm just trying to figure it out, thank you.
Okay. Um, anyone in the audience wish to address the, at the application in Marist College? If not, no other questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some who?
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and there's one recuse, okay.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, Keith and Debbie Hoffnagle, thirty-one Violet Avenue. Okay, if you just, Keith Hoffnagle?
Mr. Hoffnagle, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Okay, so will you just briefly tell us what, what you're hoping to do?
I purchased property on Violet Avenue, which included a restaurant on the corner of Spring Street and Violet Avenue, uh, I purchased that in November two thousand fourteen, uh, I do see on your paperwork that they put that I bought it in February two thousand fourteen, which is incorrect, I purchased that property as an investment property, uh, to rent out the house and to rent out the restaurant, uh, now, I'm told I have to go for a, a permit, which I thought was still active when I purchased the property, the tenant that's going in there, is trying to go in there, did receive, uh, building permits, uh, to do the improvements that they already did so far, and that was, of course, from the Town of Poughkeepsie Building Department, uh, now, he's invested a large sum of money, uh, between fifteen, sixty thousand dollars, I invested a large sum of money purchasing the property, assuming since it was there for in excess of fifty years, uh, that there would be no problem continuing as a restaurant, uh, if I can't get the approval, the hardship would be is to convert that into a rental for students or family, or whatever the case may be, and I really don't want to run out to students, uh, I just am going to keep it as a restaurant, the cost to convert that into a house would be approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, the cost to remove the, uh, blacktop parking lot to make that change would be in excess of eighteen thousand dollars, just to remove it, uh, again, I really do not want, want to go that route, I don't feel, uh, since it's been there so long, there's never been a problem, uh, it's easy in, easy out, plenty of parking, uh, and if I can't use it for that, I can't see where the, the benefit to convert it to a residence, uh, would be cost-effective, and therefore, my only other option, which sounds terrible, I would just have to tear the building down, uh, because what I estimate, I could never recover in a rental what it recovered for the taxes and the building itself, uh, and then, of course, that would reduce, you know, the amount of taxes that is collected on that building, which is about five thousand dollars a year. Uh, the other issue is the person, uh, who is, wants to rent it, uh, before I did purchase the building, I asked him to go to the town board, uh, Building Department, to make sure they're able to do what he wanted to do before we'd signed the lease, uh, I do have a receipt here that he did get a permit to do the improvements, he did get, uh, inspections, uh, fire inspections, electrical inspections, and inspection from the Building Department, uh, as to, you know, the work he did was fine, uh, the last inspection is when he was told to stop work because of the zoning issue, I don't feel the, the problem I have is self-inflicting, uh, if I'd known I wouldn't be able to do that, I would have not purchased the property, of course, that's really, I do have a, uh, because I do notice that you have February, which is when I bought the, the property, is not true, I do have the Dutch County Clerk recording page here, if you need to see that, I do have the estimate to, uh, you know, redo the restaurant into residential, I have that here, I also have the tax amount that, if I'm unable to make a commercial move with it, uh, again, not that I want to do that, I just would have to tear it down.
Okay, um, all right, let me, let me just get a couple of things here, um, you bought the property when?
Uh, it was November two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, so we want to correct that in, in the report, um, and then, um, you know, as, as, as you know, um, one of the issues that we had was, was simply, the, the code requires us to have certain financial information-
Yes.
And you have that?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, is that something you can give to us now?
Yes, I do, I have a few copies here I can give to you.
Okay, so, uh, why don't you just give it to our counsel, and then, um, actually, and maybe she could take a quick look at that, um, I mean, we'd, we would, we would like to resolve this, but we also need to-
Yes.
-absorb the, the, the information, okay, um, okay, let me, let me just turn it over to other members of the board, Christine, any questions?
What type of restaurant is, is it going to be?
It's going to be a pizzeria.
Okay, that's all.
Betty?
Well, I kind of question how he could ever make this parcel conforming, aside from razing the building and putting a lawn there, that's about the only thing you can do to make the parcel conform, because you can't have two, um, buildings on one parcel, can you?
No, I don't think so.
Can, I don't think you can have two single-family dwellings on one parcel, right?
But you need a variance if you're going to do that all the time.
So, so I wonder really if he could ever make the parcel conforming, because both the house and the, the restaurant are on the same parcel, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I have to wonder about that, um, the other thing was, by the way, I worked at that restaurant in nineteen sixty, sixty.
It opened up approximately nineteen fifty-four.
Yes, I, I know. Now, how old I am, um, and you can't subdivide it either, right? I'm, I don't think you can subdivide it, so I guess, I went through, no one, no one can do a use variance like Mr. Olson back there, but I went through the uses myself, because you're, we're supposed to know whether or not you can use this parcel, um, for any other use that's allowed in the district.
Okay.
All right, is, is it okay if I did that, or was he supposed to?
Sure.
All right, the only thing that I could come up with that could possibly be a use would be, um, a daycare, but the truth of the matter is, is down the road's probably a huge daycare that, so therefore, I don't see how that would get any business whatsoever, so I couldn't find any other uses that, um, might work in that restaurant facility, so, I don't know.
Okay, um, all right.
No questions.
Okay, uh, yeah, my only question had to do with the fact that there is, there is both a residential house and a restaurant on this, on the same parcel, you, are you currently renting out the house?
Yes, uh, matter of fact, the lady that lives in there is the one I bought her from, she's ninety-nine years old, so I have a lifelong lease with her.
Okay, um, so presumably, and I guess this is also a question for our counsel, um, if we granted the use variance, we could grant it just for the, uh, restaurant building? And, I mean, I wouldn't want to grant a use variance to the entire parcel, because then the house could be converted into a restaurant.
The use variance could be specifically addressed to the building, it could be a use variance for that building.
Okay, we can, we can condition it that way?
Yes.
Okay, good.
On the tax, on the tax, uh, bill, it does list it separate, that, that building.
So, so the, oh, okay.
It is separate from the residence.
Okay, okay, good, um, okay, Paul?
I'm sorry, was this a prior non-conforming use, or was there a special use permit granted for it?
I think it was non-conforming since fifty-
And then, when, when was it abandoned as a restaurant?
It was April of two thousand, let me get my dates right, thirteen, approximately, I'm not exactly sure of the date.
Okay, so more than a year from when you purchased it?
Correct, well, I'm sorry.
More than a year from when you purchased it?
No.
Is when they closed, yes, now, at my purchase date, no, in other words, I purchased it in November two thousand fourteen-
Right.
The restaurant was closed April of two thousand thirteen, approximately.
So more than a year?
Yeah, it, it had been closed over a year, yeah, and of course, that's, that's-
It's in a year, April to November.
The grandfathering, um-
April thirteen.
Yeah.
To November. Fourteen would be one year-
Okay.
And then, April, November comes after April.
Okay, you win, you're the lawyer.
All right. I can argue it either way.
Right.
Guess you could.
Okay, but, but, but the, but the issue is that it was over a year, and so, the, by our code, the grandfathering lapses, and, um, uh, so therefore, we need a, need a, a use permit for it.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, Larry?
No questions.
Okay, Phyllis? Okay.
No questions.
Tony? Okay, um, anyone from the audience wish to address the application for a use variance for a restaurant at one thirty-one Violet Avenue? Okay.
If I can address the board briefly before you decide whether to hold open the meeting or not?
Yes.
If this is found to be a self-created hardship, then the board cannot grant a use variance for this applicant, and if the use were lost prior to the applicant- And if the use were lost prior to the applicant purchasing the property, I believe that would be a self-created hardship, because he purchased it at the time that the non-conforming use were not in place. If we take the April date of the closing of the restaurant, and a year from that date, and I do believe, but I haven't looked at the issue recently, because I didn't realize that it would come up in this form tonight, that there are occasions where it's the intended use of the property, and depending on if it was sold as a restaurant and so on, there may be some room, even though it was not physically used day-to-day as a restaurant, where the board might be able to find that the intention was to continue the restaurant use, and that bought a little bit of extra time, or, but I honestly can't speak to that at this point. But if the board were to conclude that the restaurant closed in April of twenty thirteen, and the applicant did not buy it until November of twenty fourteen, the non-conforming use would have stopped by that point, and I do believe under the law it would be a self-created hardship if those are the dates to be used, and Brian can back me up or not on that, but I believe that's the case. So I think I would ask the board if they want me to look into that a little bit further, and maybe the applicant also, to hold open the public hearing, so that we could take a little bit more in-depth look at that.
My sense is that that's a serious issue, and that we do need to look at it very carefully. I don't know the exact relevance of this, but I'm a little disturbed about the fact that he got building permits and so on, and
We didn't catch it.
This was never flagged. I know that happens, I just find it, you know, very unfortunate in this case. And that, that may have some relevance, I don't know. Any other comments?
I would be happy if she, I'd be happy to adjourn this, so she can.
I would like to.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I think you hear that we would like this to have a good outcome.
So I'm a little confused, what's the next step?
The next step would be for me to have a further conversation with you, and confirm the dates for the restaurant closing, and any other facts that may help the board with its determination as to when the non-conforming use ceased, and what happened thereafter. Because under the code, if the non-conforming use ceased for more than a year, then you, the property no longer has the right to be used as that purpose. And if you, since you purchased the property, technically after that year was up, you're deemed to have known of it, or should have known of it, and therefore, the board would be without power to grant you a use variance in that case.
So it'd be a dead issue.
Yes.
Well, I think we, I would like to see this explored.
Right, but before you adjourn, is there anyone in the audience that?
I asked, and
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no one has a comment, so. All right, so is your motion to adjourn, item fifteen, to April thirteenth?
No, second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay, so you'll hear from our attorney.
Okay.
Okay. Item number sixteen. New England Realty Group, ninety-two Fairview Avenue. So if you'd each state your names.
Paul Swozy.
Good evening, Theoni Stamos Salato, counsel for Mr. Swozy.
Could you say your name again?
Sure. Theoni Stamos Salato.
Oh, Ms. Salato, now I forgot his name.
It's Mr. Swozy.
Oh, Paul Swozy.
Swozy, yeah, I wasn't sure, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. So, you're here with a request for an interpretation, so
Correct.
Please explain.
Well, we submitted, along with the application, a narrative, so I believe everyone should have a copy of it. So I can actually just address some of the issues. The subject premises are a legal two-family dwelling, and according to the code, the owner can have up to ten persons who are not related living at the property, correct? It's a two-family, so according to the code, you can have ten unrelated people. He purchased the property, it's a family home, in two thousand and five, which were being used and occupied in the same exact manner as they are currently being used and occupied, up to a total of ten individuals. There were no violations then, or at any time thereafter. If this is a new law, then the subject premises should not be subject to the law, as its use should be grandfathered. When he purchased the property, he took subject to existing tenancy and leases, which consisted of up to a total of ten people. In addition, he also purchased the premises subject to new tenancies and leases that had been previously executed by the then-owner and future tenants, which again consisted of up to a total of ten people. He was subject to those leases. Since this is a legal two-family dwelling, the maximum occupancy of no more than ten people not related living at the premises has not been violated. I did, we did indicate that upon request, we could submit relevant copies of those leases. I do have copies for the entire board of all of the leases when he purchased the property that were in effect at that time, and the leases that he was taking subject to for the following year. So I have copies for the board, I can pass them now, or at the end, however you wish.
Okay.
We can do it at the end, because I have other copies, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
So the applicant has always used the premises in the same manner as when they purchased the premises, a total of no more than ten people in the two-family home. He only has ten people residing in total at the premises. We respectfully submit that the applicant never went beyond the total of ten occupants during his ownership. Minor alterations to the premises can easily remedy the breakdown of each unit, and ten occupants would still be occupying the premises. In October of two thousand and twelve, he received a notice of intent to inspect the subject premises by the Town of Poughkeepsie Building Department, which a copy was attached to our application. It's my understanding, too, that the fire inspector also conducted a walkthrough and inspection at that time.
Both of them, yes.
Yes. And at that subject time, the premises were occupied and used in the same exact manner as they currently are. Again, a total of ten individuals broken down in the same manner as they're currently occupied. Consequently, at that time, no violations were found. It's also important and relevant to state that no violations were found whatsoever since that time. There have been no complaints in recent years regarding the subject premises. They are well-maintained, clean, and overall look better than when the applicant first purchased the premises. Our other argument is, in addition, the law is, makes no common sense and bears no relation to the health, safety, or general welfare of the occupants, neighbors, or the town. Just by way of example, it's important to state that this law does not prevent up to thirty related people living together in this particular two-family dwelling. Say hypothetically, each unit has three bedrooms. For example, if we assume each family consists of two parents and three children in each bedroom, where under the code it is allowed, there would be a total of fifteen people in each unit, then under this law, those thirty people residing at the hypothetical premises would not be deemed a violation under the law.
One has four, the other has three.
So in essence, there could be more than thirty total people residing, fifteen on each side. What is the, we question the reasoning behind the law, which has no limits on occupancy for people who are related, yet limits the occupancy for unrelated people to no more than five. Further, we believe the law is prejudicial, discriminates, and should be stricken as unconstitutional. In any event, again, we respectfully contend that the applicant has not violated the maximum occupancy of a total of ten people at the premises. Should be noted that in two thousand and thirteen, a town agency from the Town of Poughkeepsie tried to change the designation of some of the properties, including the subject property, to that similar of a boarding house in, which would have actually increased the occupants at the premises, which was only a little over a year ago. Further, it's our contention that the persons occupying the premises shall be considered the functional equivalent of a family. The zoning board of appeal shall utilize the standards enumerated in the law in making the determination. We contend that the persons at the subject premises now at all times, they share the entire dwelling, do not act as separate borders, they have stability akin to a permanent family structure, they occupy the premises for long term, they share expenses, furniture, et cetera, and the occupants, upon information of belief, use the address of the dwelling for all purposes, and they are the functional equivalent of a family, and shall be deemed as such. We indicated in our application that proof of same shall be made available upon request. Unfortunately, I was unable to get the tenants to come and provide their own testimony, but I do have signed affidavits for each and every one of the tenants, that I can actually either orally indicate what the affidavit basically says, or I could submit, I have copies for the entire board, so I can do that as well.
We would need copies.
Okay. I will submit those, I have copies for the entire board. And basically, just to kind of summarize, they basically say that they reside together at the following address from July first, two thousand and fourteen, they have a yearly lease, they share the rent, it's not a temporary or a framework for transient living, they're not separate borders, they chose to live together. It would be devastating and unfair if they were required to separate or live separate and apart. They are graduating this year, they more than likely would continue to live together at the premises pursuant to a lengthy lease if they weren't. They share the entire apartment, the household furniture, appliances, food, they share the expenses of the security deposit. All of them together share not only the furniture and appliances at the premises, but all household expenses, including, but not limited to, food, electric, natural gas, sewer and water, telephone, internet, cable, and any and all other expenses associated with living at the premises. They also affirm that they use the above address for purposes including personal, professional, and school-related matters. As a group, they share other items, including clothing, vehicles, and other personal items. And then talks about the hardship it would create if they had to, at this point, vacate the premises. And then, should be stated that the occupants are students who will be graduating from Maris College in May. Obviously, this has caused a lot of stress on all of the parties, excuse me. And we have a copy of their current lease that I could submit as well.
Okay, well, in any case, there's a good deal of information for us to look at. Before I turn it over to the board for questions, let me just try to clarify a couple of things. One is that the, the facts of the situation are determined not by the ZBA, but by the zoning administrator, who has determined that in this two-family house, there is, I believe, one portion of it is occupied by four, and the other portion is occupied by six. And having six unrelated adults in one is a violation of the code. Okay, that is her determination, not ours. Okay. The second thing I want to clarify is that the zoning board does not write the zoning code. And whether you feel this is, you know, a good piece of zoning regulation or not, is a matter to take up with the town board. The code is what we have to work with. And so, the portion of your presentation that is really before us, has to do with whether or not the current tenants are the functional equivalent of a family. And there's a list of specifications, and at the end, you did address that. But I just, I just don't want us wandering off into sets of discussions that we can do nothing about, and would essentially be a waste of everybody's time. Okay, having said that, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have a question for Lisa. Two-ten-nine says, is related to a family in a single-family nonprofit dwelling. If this is a two-family dwelling, and if it's rented out, I would guess that it would be for profit, so is it relative?
That's an excellent question. Rather than give you my off-the-cuff answer, since I suspect that we have a fair amount of paperwork that we may be going through in the next month, I'd like to think about that a little bit, and give a more detailed answer to that.
Yeah, thank you. And the other question I have, you have all the affidavits from the girls that are currently renting there, how is it that we didn't have those before tonight, so that we could have reviewed them?
Well, it was a little difficult trying to get them all in place, and originally, we wanted to have the tenants come in and testify, and for lack of anything else, we just brought them with us at the time of the meeting, I'm not really sure. We had them for the February meeting, no one requested them. We put in our response here that any additional information that you required, you were free to ask for it. And like I said, originally, our intent was to have them come in and testify, so.
I think even if, even if they were without that information, I couldn't have made determination. Anyway.
Okay. I apologize, we apologize.
Yeah, they couldn't come in tonight, because they're in the process of taking midterms also.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
All right.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to know why we weren't offered the ability to correct the alleged violation through construction. The zoning administrator never offered that, or
Building another house?
She never does.
What do you mean, construction?
Well, in other words, this is, this is a, this is a legal two-family house, there's two sets of stairs that go up to the third floor, but one is closed off. So, we could very easily open the other one up, and make a dividing wall, and have five on each side.
That
But she, you know
That may, in fact, be
She was very, she was very obtuse about, you know, sending that letter, and, you know, she didn't want to hear anything. When I told her that we had inspections before with the building inspector and the fire inspector, you know, she didn't want to hear it.
That's something you and your attorney may want to pursue, but it's just, you know, as I said at the beginning, that is not something that we, it's not within our jurisdiction. You know, what is before us is an interpretation of what constitutes the functional equivalent of a family, and whether that definition applies in this case. You know, it's, what the basis of the determination that there's a violation is something that we have nothing to do with.
I could also say that the zoning administrator has to deal with existing conditions, and if you were to take action, that would remedy the violation, that would be something that would be brought up within the justice court in terms of the violation, or perhaps in advance of that with the zoning administrator. But that's not something that this board has the ability to control one way or the other. But it certainly would go away, a long way, I think, to easing the
But she could have.
Violation.
I mean, instead of sending a nasty letter and threatening to, you know, find me and throw somebody out on the street, certainly that could have been looked at.
She deals with whatever the conditions are existing at that time, and the order to remedy is, as I understand it, the form that's used whenever the existing conditions don't conform.
There's a copy of correspondence here from November twenty-sixth, where she sent you a letter saying, "My understanding is that New England Realty Group will be reducing the occupancy of the dwelling unit from six to five unrelated adults."
We attempted.
"To accomplish this, I have granted" "To accomplish this, I have granted an extension on the order until January 15, 2015."
Right. During that time, we were attempting to accommodate that but found that we couldn't because the tenants had a lease and the tenants didn't want to separate. And I wasn't able to do that.
Right. It became very difficult, as you can imagine, to give your tenants notice that one of the six tenants have to leave in the middle of a.
Well, he could have. He could have.
Okay. But one, I mean. Once again, this may be very important to you, but it's irrelevant to us. I'm sorry.
But isn't part of the obligations of the zoning board of appeals to look into the administrator's decision, which in our opinion was very irrational, it was arbitrary?
That is not what you have requested. You made an application for, and I'll quote, "An interpretation, a request for a determination that the occupants of 92 Fairview Avenue are the functional equivalent of a family."
Correct. And that's because that was.
That is, that's what was submitted. That's what was advertised. That's what we're having a public hearing on. And this is what we have to vote on. And nothing else.
I think that was because Mr. Swazie was led to believe that that was the only option he had by the administrator.
Well, if you will look at the code, you know, there can be a number of different kinds of appeals. And perhaps one of those is what you want to pursue. But that's not what's in front of us tonight. So my, I guess. So are you done with your comments?
Who?
You.
I haven't made any yet. I haven't made any yet.
You haven't made any yet? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Never got there.
No.
Would you?
I would. There was a statement made that the dwelling has not had any issues. Would it be possible if you get a copy of the police blotter for 2013, 2014? Since I seem to recall, there was an incident, at least one at that house, for noise.
There's been no noise complaints there for three years.
Could you get a copy of the police blotter? Ask them for a copy?
Sure.
For, I don't know if.
Noise violation or noise ordinance?
Oh, I guess.
The last noise violation that actually I got a notification for was actually something that occurred on the sidewalk in front of the house that had nothing whatsoever to do with any of my tenants. It was just passersby's.
I'm asking you a different question. I'm asking, could you or would you please try to get a copy of that blotter?
Sure.
Okay. And.
For 2013 and 2014 is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
For some reason, that sticks in my mind. Also, when the town tried to change the designation of properties in 2013 for Marist housing, essentially, or rental housing, Marist Culinary, whoever it was, was it not to reduce the head count from five to four and not to increase it?
I don't recall.
That was in August of 2012.
2012, 2013. But I believe we tried to reduce it.
In August of 2012, Mr. Sifon brought that before the town board, and it was defeated. And he, of course, lives right next door, as you know. So then in November, the building inspector and the fire inspector were sent on me. Okay? We had no violations. Then the next spring, the tax assessor is on me. They wanted to change the designation of the property. So there's a pattern here.
And I have another question. I live in the same area. Almost on a daily basis, almost every night, there are at least probably 12 to 13 cars in that driveway. If you have only 10 residents, what are the extra cars there for every night?
I suppose there are people visiting.
All night? If that's the case, are they considered living there during the evening hours?
No.
A council, is that true, Lisa? If you're there overnight and you're sleeping there, if that's the case, would they not be considered residents of that home?
It would depend on the frequency of how often.
Almost every day.
But whether it's the same cars and so on. That's a fact-intensive question that we couldn't answer on the record we have before us.
Do you have pictures of that?
No.
I'd like to see that.
I'm sure I could get them if I had to.
Okay.
But I'm not really sure how the amount of cars. I could see your questioning. However, we did indicate that there's a total of 10 on the property. So on one side, there is only four. I'm just speculating. But there could be maybe, you know, some guests on that side. And we don't know. I mean, there's no code that says you need to only have a certain amount of cars, correct, for this certain amount of residents. I don't know if they leave at 2:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning. I mean, we don't really know if they are.
I'm all set, Jim.
Overnight guests.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. But the problem I have in this, in the notion of a family, is, has to do with the stability issues and the kind of long-term nature of the relationship. And I'll certainly look at what's in the affidavits. But, I mean, it seems to me if these are primarily students, they're going to graduate. Most of them will probably go on to other things. I have a hard time accepting that that is stable in the way that a family would be.
But we're not talking about, and I do have copies of the leases, I mean, we're not talking about, you know, a month-to-month lease. We're talking about a yearly lease. They share all of their expenses. They share a lot of different things as well. Again, I mean, they're not transient. Theoretically, they could have been there for all four years. Then they would have had more stability.
Some marriages don't last a full year.
I mean, there's not too many.
Those marriages probably weren't much of a family to start with. I mean.
They are by definition.
You know, to me, it's.
Soon as you get married, you're considered a family.
You know, Robert Frost's idea that a home and family is where, is the place where when you go there, they have to take you in. And, you know, short-term student housing doesn't fit that.
Correct. But it's not really short-term housing. Again, it's a yearly lease. Theoretically, it could have been a two-year lease, a three-year lease.
But it wasn't.
But it wasn't, correct. But I don't believe that a yearly lease can be considered anything but a stable, long-term tenancy.
Yeah. I think this is where we may disagree. Paul?
I don't have any problem accepting a non-traditional family orientation that would last over four years. So can you tell me, of the 10 people that have leases there, what's the longest period the same group has been leasing together?
Well, I couldn't.
Two years.
Two years?
Two years.
And how many of those 10 people, all 10 people for the two years?
No. Four of the people.
In the one side of the house?
Right.
Okay. Those four people for two years?
Right.
So their junior and senior year, they, or at least for two years in a row, they resided together?
Yes.
Okay. And the lease goes from, you said July? July to July?
One goes from, one goes from July 1 to June 30.
Correct.
And one goes from June 1 to May 31.
And do they move in in July?
Yes.
And they reside there for the summer?
Not, they don't, you're asking like if they all move in on the same day?
No. I'm asking if they live there in the summer.
Generally, no.
Okay. And I noticed when I was there, there are some out-of-state plates. Are those tenants? Are they visitors or?
Yes.
That's what.
I'm sorry, which one?
Yes, there are tenants there with out-of-state plates.
And is the, are either one of the apartments furnished?
No.
They're not furnished?
The tenants provide their own furniture.
Beds?
Everything.
Everything?
Everything. There are also a number of people who have New York state plates.
I don't believe that's really relevant to whether or not they're a family or living as a family. I mean, if they are.
Well, if one of the standards is that they intend to use this as their address, if they're registered in New Jersey, it indicates to me that they're not using this as their permanent address. So I do think that's relevant to that part of it.
Well, for one, I mean, I'm not even really sure if that's their vehicle or if it's maybe a family member.
Well, I don't know. We're going to decide tonight, right? You're going to provide some additional information.
Yes.
So one of those things, I think, with all their driver's licenses and unless they really are affidavits and not just sworn statements. Are they sworn statements or affidavits? Notarized statements or affidavits?
They're notarized statements.
Okay. So that's not an affidavit, right? The notary is just swearing that that person signed it. It's not.
Well, they're being duly sworn and indicating under penalties of perjury all of the information.
The notaries or the affi?
No, the undersigned, the person who signed it.
Okay. Under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll submit those?
Yes.
The driver's licenses, the leases?
I have the leases. We do not have driver's licenses. But we can get copies of those if need be.
And you're going to have leases over a number of years, right?
We have leases from when Mr. Swazie purchased the premises, the leases that he took subject to, the current ones, the ones that he took subject to for the following year. And we have copies of the current leases.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, the property's been operated in the same manner since he purchased it, obviously since before he purchased it. Another statement is that.
Right. But that's not, again, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, that's not in front of us. And how many parking spots are there there?
I believe, I believe there's 10 or 11.
All right. That's all I have.
Larry? You weren't able to reduce by one the number of people living there. Did you get back to the zoning administrator to inform her of that?
Yes. And basically, the response was, there's nothing we can do. And basically, we were directed that the only option we had was to file for the interpretation, which is what Mr. Swazie did. There was no mention about, you know, doing the minor renovations, which unfortunately, he couldn't do while the tenants were in there anyway. So that wouldn't have been an option that he could have done right now. He would have to wait until the end of their lease term.
That's all.
Tony? Okay. Anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application or the request for an interpretation in 92 Fairview Avenue? Okay. Any other questions?
Go along with your Paul's question on the, who owns the furniture? Who owns the appliances?
I do.
Thank you.
So my understanding is we are going to review the material you're leaving. So we need to adjourn this to next week.
Month.
Or next week, next month. Okay. Time flies. Time flies. Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn item number 16 to April 13?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. So if, I think the easiest way, if you just leave all of that with, I can leave it there and we'll make sure everybody gets a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 17, Yijin Jiang, 19 Fairview Avenue Extension. Okay. And are you going to address items 18 and 19 as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
My name is Richard Olson with the law firm of McCabe and Mack. I'm here this evening simply to ask for an adjournment of these three matters. We have been retained by the appellant. I have read all the appellate division cases, so I'm not here to debate the family definition with you. We are bringing the property into compliance or doing that because the property owners have purchased another dwelling. They are going to be moving the tenants into it. We just need some time to complete that and then we can deal with the issue of the violation. So I'm simply requesting an adjournment to next month. We may, at that point, have the violations corrected.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
Work, sir, me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So let me move that items 17, 18, and 19 be adjourned at the request of the applicant's attorney to our meeting on April 13.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Brings us to, let me make a note here. Item number 20, Malabar Realty, 798 Duchess Turnpike and 219 Over rocker Road.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing myself on 20 and 21.
The easel should be right there.
Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I think it would be prudent to open the public hearings for both items 20 and 21 at the same time so that we have one complete record.
Okay. So we'll.
Good evening.
We'll ask you to address both the area variances and the 21, which is the request for the special use permit. Okay. So if you'd each state your names into the microphone Okay, so if you'd each state your names into the microphone and be sworn in, please.
I'm Legend, representing Malabar Realty.
And I'm Rich Tompkins with Maury Architects.
Mr. Tompkins and Mr., say it again.
Legend.
Legend.
Legend, yep.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes.
Okay. So would you like to, we, we have the maps and descriptions, so if you could kind of give us just a quick overview to remind our ramp mind us.
Sure, we're currently in front of the planning board to review the application, but the intent of the project is to demolish the three structures that are on the site. There's an existing service station, which is also a gas station slash convenience area. There's an apartment building on the south side, and there is a used car trailer that was used as an office for the used car lot. So our intention is to demolish all three of those structures and build one convenience store slash gas station with the pumps on the north or the northeast side of the property. And then that includes other site upgrades, parking, dumpster enclosures, landscaping, signage, all of those things. So the intent of our project is to reduce the number of uses that are here because there currently was a used car lot, an apartment building, the service station, there's also U-Haul rental here, and there was the gas station itself. So we're proposing now the convenience store gas station as one, and we do have four proposed parking spaces for U-Haul vehicles.
Okay. So then, briefly, I kind of, it appears there are about six different variances that are required.
Yeah, and some of these are based, again, because of the shape of the property, and we have frontage on two sides or basically, you know, surrounding this property other than the west side. The actual buildable lot is very minimal on the property. So that's why we're asking for some of the area variances for the front yard and rear yard. The impervious coverage, obviously, is for vehicle maneuvering for the pumps. And there's also a note as part of that impervious coverage, the site actually seems much larger when you're out there because the curb along Route 44 is, and the grass, what we're proposing to be a grass area, but currently, right now, is parking, is actually not even our property. So the property line is actually set back from the road quite a bit, so that reduces our area to be able to provide additional green space. We have been working with the planning board to work on some of the circulation to increase the areas that we actually have for more green space.
Okay. And there were a number of, a number of the variances had to do with these setbacks. And there were, there were two that I was a little bit unclear about. One, it says to allow the parking of motor vehicles within 20 feet of a residential district boundary, and I think what that refers to are rental vehicles. Is that correct?
I believe that's what Sarah had mentioned originally, that's the storage of the parking in a required yard was for the U-Haul vehicles.
Okay. So that actually, does that have anything to do with the residential district?
Well, I.
Because I don't, if I, if I understand where you're planning to put the U-Haul vehicles, that's far more than 20 feet from the, from the residential.
The requirement, and I don't know the section off the top of my head, but there is a requirement, I believe it's 500 feet from a residential district for a gasoline service station.
Okay, that was the other one. I think that's a separate one. The nearest thing I could figure out is that in the code, and it's, I believe it's 21088, it said no rental vehicles in a required yard. And I think that's because this is technically a front yard?
Correct, yeah. And then, and again, this goes back to the odd shaped lot and the areas that we have here, but there is a dotted line that is, that creates this triangle shape, which is actually the allowable buildable area. So you can see that the parking is within those, or within that setback requirement.
Yeah, but, but.
So this is the required setback.
Okay, the parking is, the parking is in the front yard.
The parking is in the setback.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then the second is the variance to allow a motor vehicle service facility within 500 feet of a residential district.
Right, and that's where, again, this is an existing service station, where we weren't creating this from, you know, some other use that we were trying to put here. This currently is a service station, aside from the fact that we had to remove the takes because of DOT, or, I'm sorry, DEC.
Okay, and then, again, just to make sure that, under the special permit, there are two that you're requesting. One is to allow a motor vehicle service facility in a BH zone where it's allowed but with a special permit. And the second is for the motor vehicle rental part of it.
Correct.
And you do not need a special permit for the restaurant part or the.
It's a convenience store. Well, I think that's where, I was actually a little confused because I know that Sarah was trying to create that as the motor vehicle service station, I think was sort of lumped with the convenience store.
Okay. The drawing looks almost like a.
He's got outside seating.
Right.
Yes.
You know, I thought it was a restaurant, but is it?
We will have food also. I mean, some people, if they want to go out, they can just sit and relax, that's it. I mean.
But it's more like a convenience store.
It's more of a convenience store, almost like a deli where you may have a few seats inside or a few seats out.
We have seats provided inside.
Okay.
But it's not like a restaurant with 60 seats that someone's going to go there to eat. It's not, it's not like that. It's a convenience store that may sell sandwiches or something like that, and they could sit down, eat lunch, and then leave. That's, that's the kind of idea.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Not like a full-blown restaurant.
All right. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Well, you know, the, since we're talking about the outdoor seating thing, in that zone, it says that although you can have a convenience store, it's only for off-site consumption. So that's what made me wonder why you had, it's 12109, why you had outdoor seating, not only on the side, but it looks like, is that tables and chairs right in front?
It's not, oh, yeah, it's not a formal seating, it's just like, you know, somebody who want to have like a fresh breath or something like that, that's all. I mean, it's not a formal seating, we don't serve food outside, no.
All right, well, I guess that's a legal question, right? If they sell it and you eat it, you know, I don't know, I guess that's a legal question. So the, you're, this whole property line where you have two parcels right now, you're going to abandon that property line, is that what it says there?
We are, we are planning to combine to one parcel, yep.
Can you do that or is there some?
That would really be a question for the applicant's attorney. There are ways in which you can combine two lots, and for our present purposes, I would assume that whatever we do and whatever the planning board done, does would be conditioned upon that combination.
I guess I had the same question that I had earlier, and she already answered it, was can you have two special use permits on the same parcel? And that's already been answered for me. Oh, the big fence in the back, that, is that going as well, is that going to stay there?
The big, the big fence?
The big fence, when you're going down Over rocker Road, right behind the building, is a huge fence behind the apartment building there?
Is it?
Currently or going to be? Currently, we have a fence there.
Are you talking a fence?
Yeah, there is a huge fence there.
Within our property or along this property? That's one of the things that the planning board had asked us at the last meeting, and we're actually working on trying to find out whose fence that is. So we have the surveyor that's trying to determine if that's even ours. I think, right now, we're, we're under the assumption that it's on the neighbor's property, it's not even our fence. So if it's, if it's not ours, we don't have the option of removing it. We are proposing a fence from the end of our building heading in a south direction toward Over rocker Road.
Oh, that's the one I was talking about.
We're proposing this sign, or, I'm sorry, this fence.
An eight foot, is there a reason why it's eight foot?
Well, again, at, at our last planning board meeting, one of the neighbors had actually requested a 10-foot high fence. So we were proposing an eight-foot high fence. And again, one of the other items that were brought up at the planning board that we're currently working on for the next submission is also, we, we're going to try to locate the neighbor's property and driveway to determine our sight lines. So that eight feet, it was suggested between the planning board and the zoning administrator to ask the variance for the eight feet up to the property line, but that may have to get cut back just for our sight distances for the neighbor and for our property. So we're asking for the variance up to that edge, but more than likely, we'll be pulled back because of that.
And the plantings that you show, right on, right on the corner?
Which, which corner?
The one that you said isn't his property?
This here? Lower left?
The other end.
Oh, this here?
Yeah.
Yes, we've reviewed.
You're going to put those plantings there even though it's not?
Yes, we've had meetings with DOT, and we're allowed to plant low shrubs. The plan that you have in front of you actually shows a tree, but we've, since we've submitted this plan, DOT has asked us to remove the tree, and they've agreed to allow us to plant low shrubs. So there will be planting, it'll be a slightly different configuration.
Okay, Art?
No questions.
Okay, I think I've asked the ones I had, Paul, or you're recu, you're recused on this one. Larry?
No questions.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Tony?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at, of Malabar Realty, 798 Duchess Turnpike, 219 Over rocker Road?
Yes, sir. Roy Stangle, 217 Over rocker Road.
Mr. Stangle, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
So help me God.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
I was approached by the present owner, who still owns the property, is my understanding, who runs the, Vic Marchese, who's not here tonight, who runs this gas station. I hope noise ordinance is, applies to commercial as well as residential. Getting back to other people about noise, he's worked, one, his fellows worked, one, two in the morning, and my house is right here. Anyway, to make a long story short, I talked with Mr. Marchese and this gentleman over here, the new owner, and we discussed this, this fence was put up by Mr. Marchese a long time ago. Issue was brought up, he sought through zoning board 12-foot or 15-foot high variance for fencing to put up around his property so my neighbors wouldn't be able to see. His U-Haul trucks were parked back here, which I saw for the longest time. This fence that you speak of, ma'am, was put up by Mr. Marchese. It's only a five-foot fence. It's dilapidated, it needs repair. I repaired it somewhat. I don't want from the whole, my property line extends two feet, two and a half feet into Mr. Marchese's property. The property corner, my survey before I bought my house 20 years ago, is approximately four feet in to my driveway. We've talked about this and leave this, he gets a little triangle, I get a little triangle. Everybody's happy. I have a hedge row fence here, bushes here, which I'd like to keep. I also planted, when the town tried to widen the road, they couldn't encroach on the east side, they had to go west because of the gas line. I lost two feet of, of space. I know 15 feet is your right away. It was discussed that this wouldn't, this fence would not be necessary. It's the building height and my house, just the fence line from the corner back, I would say about 30 feet maybe. The proposal says vinyl. If he puts vinyl up, I'm going to put wood up on my side because vinyl and me don't get along. Also noise, this particular building has a dumpster enclosure, concrete right on my retaining line, right in this corner, with no, you guys approved it. So if refrigeration compressors are put in the back here, I ask that they put as far up front as possible. I know that the deli would be located in this section, so they would probably put the compressors here. If I do hear noise and everything, I'm going to come back to you and propose that I can put up a concrete wall eight foot high in this corner to block noise. Besides that, I have no qualms. My other neighbors will, you will hear from them. Thank you for your time.
I have one question. Are there two parcels between you and that corner where?
I looked at the, I compared my footage boundaries on my survey to what you have on your computer. This particular lot of Mr. Marchese's, the residential building, actually, it goes out to Route 44, it goes out to Duchess Turnpike. That was never zoned commercial. That was only zoned residential. The, it was, I guess it was a access, what do you call it, right away? But you look at your maps, you'll have to rezone this commercial, this piece of property. There's actually two pieces here, yes, ma'am, to answer your question.
There are two parcels, right, between you and, okay.
No, one residential parcel, which they, it was a old farmhouse at the time. It would be probably 215 Over rocker, because I'm on the odd side, my neighbor's 219, and I'm 217.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, the board secretary just handed me another piece of correspondence to be read into the record, addressed to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning. Gentlemen, please be advised, as an adjacent property owner, we have no objection to Malabar Realty LLC quest to improve conditions at the above captioned property, which gives the address, and we strongly suggest the zoning board of appeals work with Malabar Realty to assure the project's equitable and final completion. Please have this letter entered into the record and read at the zoning board of appeals meeting on March 9th. Sincerely, Anthony Ferrari and Louis Ferrari Jr. And they are at 220 Over rocker Road. Okay. Is there any other person that wishes to address this application?
Yeah, hi, I'm Tim Greaves.
Okay.
I live at 215 Over rocker Road.
Mr. Greaves, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. My wife couldn't be here this evening because she works. I just wanted to let you know that we've hired Rich Olson to represent us in opposition of this project. There's seven of, seven of eight neighbors who live on the block that are here that can speak for themselves, but I think this is really an overdevelopment of the project, and they're really requesting extraordinary, extraordinary amounts of setbacks for the property. Also, 219 Over rocker Road has never been established as a service station facility, and there should be a town ordinance that states one can't be built within 500 feet of a residential zone. And I don't think Vic's garage hasn't operated at dispensing gas in probably over a year and a half to two years. So if we were talking about the other commercial property that hasn't operated as a restaurant for over a year, I don't see where any hardship from Malabar Realty would be, how to have a hardship case to operate this as a service station. So I'll turn it over to Rich.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name's Richard Olson of the law firm of McCabe and Mack. As Mr. Greaves said, I've been asked to review this matter, and what I'm going to do is give you a written submission this evening, but I'll go over the points briefly for you. First of all, we believe this is an incomplete application. As has already been stated, there's an existing residential dwelling which is going to be raised. That's on a separate parcel. We're not just talking about expanding on one existing parcel, we're talking about moving a use onto another parcel. There's a two-acre zoning minimum requirement in this area. I believe that would trigger at least a variance for the lot area. The total lot area on this is approximately .8, I believe.
Mr. Olson, they're telling us they can't hear you, you've got to speak right into it.
They can't hear me.
I, I find that astounding, but.
I find that amazing. As I said, I believe we have an incomplete application at the very minimum here. I believe that there would have to be a variance of the two-acre requirement, which would, under my count, then bring it up to 11 variances, because if you count the number of individual variances, they're looking for five for front yard, they're looking for one for rear yard, one for coverage, one for the parking setback, one for the fence, and one for the 500-foot setback for a gas station from an existing residential district with residential uses. Two of those variances, they're asking for 100% relief. So in going through the criteria that you will have to analyze under 267B3 of the town law, I believe that they fail all of them. Expanding this commercial use. Expanding this commercial use to the next parcel removes the buffer of the residential dwelling to the residential district. That's a significant expansion. The question of whether this could be done any other, in any other feasible means, I believe it could be. Leave the residential dwelling there, scale down the project, utilize the vehicle service facility on the parcel where the vehicle service facility currently exists. Or follow the code 210152A, which requires that there be a 50-foot buffer on residential districts and a 25-foot protected and completely, indeed restricted, landscape buffering. There's nothing there in this presentation. Are the variances substantial? I think so. Two of them are 100%. They're essentially asking you to void the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning code at this point. Environmental impacts, noise, odor, light pollution. I find it very interesting, when I went back and I looked at the minutes of the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board, when they enacted the 500-foot setback requirement, that the Director of Planning specifically noted that this is being implemented to prevent noise, light, and other impacts to residential dwellings, specifically because these are like 24-hour operations, and Neil even stated the fact that during the summer months, when the windows are open, noise and light impacts may occur from these. Is it self-created? The Town of Poughkeepsie enacted that code February of 2013. This property was purchased in August of 2013. The elimination of the 500 setback requirement, you have it listed as an area variance. I believe it's a use variance. You are being asked to override the Town of Poughkeepsie. The Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board legislatively determined that there should be a 500-foot setback between a vehicle service facility and a residential district. They're asking you to remove that. I think that overstepped the bounds of your power. It should be a use variance. If it's a use variance, it's a self-created hardship. You can't grant that. I've also looked at the special permit criteria under 210149. Impacts on adjacent properties are considerations. You are not supposed to grant special permits if the yard requirements are not met. They're asking you to waive every yard requirement. Those are the brief pieces which I've outlined for you, and I'm gonna give you a written submission, and obviously we are asking that this board consider denying all the variances.
Okay. Thank you. And, let's see, I guess I'll let you distribute those around. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, and I'll hold it close. Good, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Your name is?
Mike Sommerfeld.
Mr. Sommerfeld, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sommerfeld, what's your address?
Right, I live at 200 over Rocker Road.
Thank you.
Okay, and to take it from a neighborhood thing, you know, I've been living there for 17 years now. It's a nice residential area. The one thing that I find is the curvature of the road, the current Vic's garage, what we know as Vic's garage, the curvature of the road causes where you don't see the station from it, from down the block, and it still looks like a very residential area, even though it's commercial down at the end. Once they get into taking down the 219 building, that brings the commercial right into the middle of the street, it changes the entire area. The property values won't be worth anything that they're worth now, because anybody who knows over Rocker Road knows that you drive down there, you really can't even see, because of the curvature and because of the 219 building, you can't see the commercial areas. But if you look, you'll see that that building there, once you take that building down, it'll just become, the whole commercial area just intrudes onto the entire, and changes the entire neighborhood. Not only that, as I think most of you know, we have many children in the area, we're constantly, the police camp out in that area because we have a lot of buses going through there, the Arlington School District, the Abilities First. I know I leave every morning, the cars are doing 40 miles an hour down over Rocker Road to try to beat the 44 traffic. I notice there's gonna be, they're looking for an easement on that side for the cars to pull out onto, onto over Rocker Road and just drive right down there. It's just gonna change the whole area. I think that you can, you can replace what's currently there, but my big concern is that it's just gonna change the whole neighborhood and basically, pretty much wipe out that entire block of, because of what's gonna happen now. Instead of being a nice residential area with commercial on the end, it's just gonna cause the whole area to look like a commercial area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. That 219 building, that appears to be vacant, is that vacant right now?
Currently, we are not renting out to somebody because, you know, once we rent out to somebody, it's very hard to vacate them. So we are just keeping, to get decision from zoning as well as from the planning board, whether or not our plans, we are hoping that we will get the approval for the applications so we could able to go forward and ask for the sale.
We can't hear a thing back here.
Okay, so you have to speak right into the microphone. Thank you.
We did not renting out now, that's all.
It is, or it's not?
It's not renting out now.
Because it looks like it needs a lot of repair, and...
Yes, it's an old house.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim?
Okay.
If I could just ask, is the proposed business indeed going to be open 24 hours?
No.
So you're gonna, what will the hours of operation be, please?
Maybe 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
And you're gonna also rent U-Haul vehicles from the property?
Yes, I mean...
How many will you be storing there?
Just four, just for namesake, because we used to have U-Haul for so many years, so a lot of people are coming for it. So I thought just to keep it for, as a extra facility offering, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address?
Mr. Chairman, I have a hearing disability, and this is less than satisfactory in terms of accommodating people who have a hearing disability.
Okay.
That is to say, this microphone. I went, I'm approaching only because I wanna submit a map. The map I'm giving you is an aerial view of the neighborhood I think would be useful for the board's deliberations.
Hold on.
I've also refused my comments.
Jim, you ask where I'm at.
To writing, and I have enough copies.
Chairman, this warning, tell me this is where you went.
I can't hear a thing.
Chairman, this warning. I swear. Did you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you. Well, I've given you my written comments. I'm gonna go through this letter. I couldn't hear much of what Mr. Olson said, but I suspect I agree completely with everything that Mr. Olson did say, and to some extent, some of my comments may be redundant because two good minds think in the same manner. But any of that, I represent Gasland Corporation, which is one of the adjacent property owners. I know this property very well because I go by it frequently. I've lived in Poughkeepsie for as long as most of you have. I've even talked to the prior owner and aware of some of the circumstances associated with the prior owner and his use of the property. I note in the preface of this letter that I think this application is objectional in the first place because this applicant is trying to shoehorn into this small parcel and intensity of use that's totally inappropriate for that size parcel, forgetting a second about the impact on the surrounding properties, which I'll get into. And I'll get into that also as a legal issue, because it invites a very serious legal issue, as I'll explain later on. And I'm paraphrasing my letter, obviously, I'm not gonna read the thing verbatim. One of the major threshold issues, I think that Mr. Olson may have addressed, but you have to address, is whether you even have the power to grant the variances, or most of the variances, that the applicant is seeking. On page five of my letter, I quote from the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance says, "The zoning board of appeals shall have no appeal authority regarding these standards to a particular property." I was involved in the drafting of this particular zoning law, it's a very transparent and a very labor-intensive project that was undertaken in 2006 and 2007. I have a very distinct recollection of why that section was put in there, and I think it's apparent on its face, and that is, the town board, when they adopted the zoning ordinance, was highly concerned about incompatible uses being together. So they wanted, where that circumstance existed, that is to say, where you had a commercial district adjacent to a residential district, they wanted additional protection. What does this application afford? What additional protection? Absolutely none. It totally ignores even the objective of the zoning law to provide additional protection, provides none. I'll give you a copy. The application itself has a lot of deficiencies. It speaks in a very conclusory manner, doesn't attempt to justify each of the separate variances. In fact, it doesn't even identify the variances it wants. There is a notice of public hearing, I don't know who drafted that, but if you look in the four corners of the application form, I don't think you're gonna find any specific variance section identified. Whether or not the public notice is correct, I don't know, but I don't think the applicant prepared it. In the application, particularly that portion devoted to area variances, the applicant, to justify his conclusion that degrading the variances will have no unfavorable impact, keeps on saying, "Well, it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood." I don't know what he means by "character of the neighborhood," but I know what the term "character of the neighborhood" means in the context of a variance. And it's not whether, it's not the character of the buildings or so forth, it's whether or not in that neighborhood, other properties have similar dimensional circumstances comparable to those being sought by the applicant. I was involved in the development of two properties in this particular zone, the Walgreens and Gasland stations, subsequent to 2006. Those properties both basically comply with the dimensional standards of the zoning law. If you look at that aerial map, you will see those properties, particularly as the buffers in the rear, have very large buffers between themselves and the adjacent residential neighborhoods. I mean, I heard you reference Tony Ferrari's letter. Look at his property in that photograph, he's got huge buffers between his property, his self-storage business, and his contracting business, and the residential neighborhood. Again, this has virtually none. And as I said before, I'll say it again, only emphasize it, even you cannot even grant that variance. And even the planning board can't grant a variance, they can increase it, but they can't decrease it. I also noted in my letter, and Mr. Olson referred to it too, the chairman actually referred to it in the very beginning, there's so many variances being sought here, and so many of those variances are so substantial, not 10%, not 20%, that this applicant is asking you to rewrite the zoning law. You do not have the power to rewrite the zoning law. You can tweak the zoning law, but where here, you have so many variances and so many substantial requests, I submit to you, it's beyond your ability to grant those variances. In conclusion, I indicate that, you know, I've been involved in zoning for 30 years, I've been before you many times, I don't think I've seen a greater assault by an applicant on a zoning ordinance than this particular application. I don't think you should grant any of the variances, I think the whole thing should be denied. And as a side, I don't know if Mr. Olson mentioned it, and if he didn't overlook that, I wanna mention, one of the variances the applicant did not ask for was an area variance for the size of his lot. He created a new lot when he bought this property in 2013, I have a copy of the deed if you wanna see it. Once he created a new lot, he had to come in and ask for an area variance for the size of that lot, because the minimum lot size in this particular district is two acres, especially, it may not be two acres, but for the gas station, you have to have a minimum of at least 30,000 square feet. He has not sought a variance for that particular dimensional, to meet that dimensional standard, and in my mind, the application is deficient, given the circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can ask, please, the Gasland, is that the one quarter, the one with the duct and duct and...
Yeah, next to the purple part.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes. My name is Peter Mack, I live at 206 over Rocker Road.
Mr. Mack, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and the call statement made by you is subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Technical advisor. He's my pressing.
Testing. Okay, I'm under oath, so I really have nothing more to say. I'm a neighbor, I'm a part of a small enclave of seven homes on a small portion of over Rocker Road. I've lived there for 44 years, I was 25 years old when I bought the house, and we have all, or most of us, with one newcomer, been there for many, many years, and we've really strived to keep our properties and our homes up. And there's nothing more that I can say that both council and my neighbors have already said, other than we're looking for our protection for our little neighborhood, that we've been there for so long. And the only thing I can request of the zoning board is that they make careful consideration of these variances in special use permits for our safety and our rights as homeowners, and long-term homeowners. And basically, I think everybody else has eloquently stated our concerns of traffic, screening, restaurant development, commercial buildings being too close to property lines. So I can only ask you, with all sincerity, to take a good, close look at this project and make your best judgment, and that's my only request.
I have one question about your neighborhood and its relation to some of the other personal properties.
Oh, so, yeah, we're surrounded with commercial properties.
So, in terms of how the others affect you compared to the possible impact, is it the use, is it the main issue, is it the size?
Well, I can go through a history, and I think you've all been by Vic's garage. I've been there for 44 years, and there has not been an improvement made on that property since I've purchased my home. It's only deteriorated, and we don't, I think we as neighbors don't wanna say we don't want anything there, it's a commercial piece of property, but what we want is good, sound judgment. As one of the councils said, that this is a dense packing, as proposed. It's a compacting on a small piece of property, and what can I tell you? This is an eyesore as it is, as it has been for 40 years, but in the same sense, we don't necessarily disagree with development of the property, but what we want is a sound and compact development of the property, a spacing within the requirements of division between commercial and residential.
Okay.
We're looking to protect ourselves. Obviously, we have, we have families that are new there, and we have families that have been there for a lot of years, and what can I say? I just, I just wanna protect our neighborhood, that's all.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Can you see the parcel from your house?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, yes. I'm just diagonally across from that blue old farmhouse.
Really, 206, is that close?
Oh, yes, yes.
All right, I just wanna know where you are. I've actually lived in the Poughkeepsie area for 10 years. I moved here from down south. This is, it's upsetting. I have a five-year-old son. He was born five years ago in that house, fenced in the backyard. His backyard will now be lighted by this canopy that they're putting up. He can't play in the street. I don't know if you know about low motion, and they do their test drives up and down Over Rocker Road. It's not safe. And I don't know any zoning rules, I don't know any laws up here. All I know is it's a safety issue and it's a family issue. We're all neighbors. We all know each other. We wave to each other. We walk our dogs down that road every single day. And you want to put another entrance to a behemoth that my son can see from his backyard 24 hours a day with the lights on? That just doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make sense as a homeowner, who's trying to raise a family, who's trying to still, and, I mean, I don't know if you noticed, but I brought my son, you guys weren't here, I brought my son to the town meeting we came to last month. And I brought him here for one reason and one reason only, to see how government works, to see how you can stand up and speak to your elected, appointed representatives to get things done that people will listen to. So as I said, I don't know your rules and your laws and your setbacks and your codes and all that kind of stuff. All I know is, I'm here for my family, my son, and for my neighbors. And as the gentleman before me said, just be sensible. Just be sensible. It's a residential neighborhood. There's a commercial property that I see from my front stoop. It's a rent-all. I very rarely see more than two or three cars go out there all during the day. I'm a stay-at-home dad, so I'm there all the time. So that's all we're asking. Am I allowed to ask questions, Mr. Chairman?
You can ask questions of the board.
Okay.
But we don't have a debate here.
Exactly. All I want to know is, raise your hand if you want this in your backyard. And I know the answer to that, so I'm not going to put you on the spot. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You and some of the others are referring to this 24 hours, but the applicant is saying that it's not 24 hours. Do you have any other information?
Well, let's see, my son's bedtime is 8:00. He gets up about 6:00, so for him, it's 24 hours. He goes out in the backyard, that light's going to be shining in his eyes. He wakes up, that light's going to be shining in his eyes. As a matter of fact, his bedroom, the window of his bedroom is facing that way, so the lights will come into his bedroom. Is it 24 hours or not?
No, we are not planning to operate 24 hours.
Okay.
Because that is...
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Linda Mack, and I live at 206 Over Rocker Road, like my husband.
Ms. Mack, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Yes, I do. I've lived there for 44 years, like my husband.
You're not.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I've lived there for 44 years, and other than the variance issues, which seem to be illegal, you know, there's so many that the attorneys have said, my question is just, what about the right of the homeowners? If you, I know it's commercial property and you do have to, and we understand that, and you need commercial revenue, you know, for the town, but what about the revenue that you've gotten from homeowners like us? I figured, and I just did a very quick, very loose calculation, for over 44 years, over 44 years, we have probably spent well over $100,000 in property taxes. That doesn't include sales taxes that the town has gotten from us using local businesses, and that's just the revenue side. But the main thing is, like what the other gentleman just said, what would you do if you lived where we do? Would you really allow so many variances on ordinances that you put into place to protect us? And that's the main thing, really. When you go to sleep at night, just think about how you would feel. And the other gentleman mentioned that 219, you know, the residential building, if that's taken down, then it is truly right in our face. And I don't know how you would feel, but I don't think you would like it. I mean, you do have to have something there, but not the scale. Like my husband said, he heard a quote, "It's like putting an elephant in a shoebox." That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I live on 208 Over Rocker Road.
Spell your last name for me. Oh, Aguirre.
Aguirre.
Yeah, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. Well, I live on 208 Over Rocker Road, which is this driveway over here, directly across from the new construction. And I just moved in the neighborhood. I bought the house August 2014, and I wasn't expecting any of this, you know. I got two little girls, I'm planning on raising them there. And my concern is the traffic, the noise, the lighting. There's supposed to be seating area here, it's going to be right across from my yard, where my girls are going to be playing. I really don't want anybody looking at my girls when they play, you know. And I just, I don't consider that this is right, you know, all the changes that they're planning on doing. I'm not against, you know, building something here where it's supposed to be in the commercial zone, but, you know.
Okay.
And that's pretty much all I got to say, you know. My neighbor said the rest. I'm new in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right. Is there anyone else wishes to address this application? Okay. Any further questions from the board? Oh, one more, okay.
Hi, I'm Ray Tarantino Jr. I live at 202 Over Rocker Road.
Mr. Tarantino, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes. I mean, I have no problem with him developing the property, as probably pretty much my neighbors do, as long as he stays in compliance of where the commercial zone is. It's coming out and taking the end of 219 on the end, like they said. I mean, I can look down the road, and I can see 219 with no problem. If you take that out, now we're going to be looking, as everybody has stated, at a commercial unit there. You know, we have Ferraris on across the street, we have the other side, which we can all see from down the end of the road. I mean, anybody, any of you board members drive down through there, you can see. You know, we all try and keep our properties nice, try and get along with everybody, and I just think if he stays within the confined area of what's the commercial zone, I don't think any of us would really have any problems with that. You know, it is an eyesore right now, I can see that.
It's almost obvious that that 219 probably needs to come down. I don't know if it meets code or not. My question to you is, if there's a big fence up there, so that you would see the fence as opposed to 219, which is pretty much an eyesore right now, would that...
Well, I don't know if you could really put a fence that high, because now you're going to be blocking the neighbor that's there trying to pull out of his driveway. So that's going to be, you know, for him to pull out the way that people pull down the road, it's going to be dangerous.
Was, when you bought your house, was Vic's there then?
Yes, Vic's was there.
Because he's been there since, like...
Oh, yeah, he's been there, I've been in the area 40-something years, and Vic's has always been there.
Yeah, I lived at 220 in 69, so, and quite frankly, there wasn't any noise coming from the gas station at all.
Yeah, well, when, previously whoever Vic was running out to was running garage, like, I come home, I work late, and I know there's hours of the mornings they were running till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. Not that he's going to have the thing, he says he's going to be there from 5:00 until 11:00. So in the morning, you're going to have the lights on at 5:00 in the morning, shining in the little kid's bedroom. You know, I don't know if you have kids yourself, if you would want to see that shining in your yard, or even 11:00 o'clock at night. That's the only concern.
The planning board does address that issue, though, because the lights that they have today have like covers over them. They're supposed to only light the portion of the lot that they're subject to.
I mean, I can even look down the road, and I can see where the Dunkin' Donuts and the other gas station is with no problem with the lighting and everything shining down the road. You know, it's just a concern with safety and everything else, just like everybody else, you know. We just want to keep a nice, quiet little neighborhood, you know. The traffic now, you know, where's all the traffic going to be dumped out to? Can you make a left coming out of the end of...
Oh, that's, is that going to change? Is the, no.
Well, if you take down 219, you're going to, where's the traffic going to flow out of there? It's going to flow out into Over Rocker Road. Now, can you come out of Over Rocker Road and make a left onto 44? Not safely.
Traffic from where? You mean from behind the building?
Well, if you take down, if you take down 219, where they're planning on having the other entrance come out, that's going to dump traffic back right to Over Rocker Road. Correct?
Can I make one comment on the left turn? We've had several meetings with DOT. The Town Highway Super has requested that we put a "no left turn" sign at the end of Over Rocker, and DOT has denied that. They would only do that if there was significant traffic, not traffic, accident reports from that area, and there was, this was brought up at the last planning board meeting, there was only one traffic accident since 2012. So DOT had said that they would not, they would not allow us to put up a sign, even if the Town's Highway Super wanted that.
But even still, all the traffic was still going to dump out onto Over Rocker Road.
Well, that's why we do, we have an entrance and exit on Route 44, so that they can continue east on Route 44.
I have no further questions on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Can I also just make a couple other comments based on some of the comments that were made?
I'd like to add my, I didn't finish.
Just restate your name, sir.
The resident. You need, we need your name for the record.
Roy Stangle. 217, that's the residential property right here. I have a commercial property right in back of me. Vic had on his used car lot, and this gentleman had on his restaurant two 5,000-watt floodlights, which the gas station Citco Shell or Mobil, or whatever it is now, has, and also low My, the light coming into my backyard was so intense, I had to triple shade my windows. In the winter, in the summertime, it was just an annoyance. Those have been extinguished. The two at low motion and the other gas station come right over everything and flood my backyard. Also mentioned Dunkin' Donuts. There's a "no left turn" sign there. One out of a dozen people will wait for traffic and take that left. Now, you're not crossing traffic anytime soon over on Dutch's Turnpike. We have incidences, I walk my dog, neighbor walks a dog, incident, car clipped the son of a gentleman that spoke, and that clipped the dog and traumatized his son, that's a whole nother story. But anyway, everybody's going to be making a right, and another right, and coming down. There was talk of once putting Over Rocker as a one-way road. They don't want that because the fire department uses that as to get their engines to and fro. So you're going to double the traffic. Fence, ma'am, you were saying? A fence maybe eight foot high along this way. The end of the building, outwards. I would have a better view. I almost, I back into my driveway because this is a blind corner, ask the highway department many, on many occasions, put a blind driveway sign there. What it would do, probably nothing, they never did anyway. I agree, all these buildings are dilapidated and should, it's an eyesore, but to be in a little bit better compliance, that's all I ask. This fence line right here, I have to weed three or four times a year because of all the junk that's growing on that side, overgrowing on my arborites and all over everything. So I have my pluses and minuses, so you have to decide. Thank you again.
Okay.
Yes, if I could address Ms. Bombas, she was asking about...
And your name?
Name again, for certain.
James Greaves.
Thank you.
Vic's gas station only had three pumps, and he hasn't pumped gas in a number of He's proposing to dump the traffic right back out into Over Rocker Road. Now, the people aren't, are going to make the right, and then they're going to go down to Old Over Rocker Road, come back down, and come back out onto Overlook Road, the Garmo Road. Or they're going to come down, go out Old Overlook Road, and go out onto 44 and make the right. They're not going to make a left and get, try to get back into traffic. So this is going to dump, I saw the traffic study, I believe it was 14.6 cars per hour, which is, for the six high-speed pumps he has here, is going, is not an accurate count of the number of cars that are going to come out on our road. So if you do the math in one day, and Matias's four-year-old girl and two-year-old, it's just going to counter a lot more traffic on the road with this project. Vic's gas station did not have a convenience store. Vic's gas station was a garage.
It had four uses at one time, four uses in there.
I've lived there for seven years, and there might have been six cars a day come out of Vic's onto our road. As to address the other commercial properties, Ferrari's, he has a storage unit, a haircutting salon, and a tattoo place. And there's two apartment buildings up above. And he runs construction business out of there. It's a very low-impact commercial building. Might get some noise sometimes at 6:00 in the morning when he's loading the trucks. And behind me is the other commercial plaza, it's 796 Dutch's Turnpike. Again, it's a low-impact building, I get some smells from the Philly Asian Restaurant back there, which was supposed to, and this is going to address his restaurant, they were supposed to have charcoal filters, so I didn't smell it. That was part of what they had done here in that planning, and they don't have that there. So once this building is constructed, it's out of your guys' hands, and it's sitting on our lap.
What is, so what is that you, I guess I'm not sure, like Jim asked before, what is it that you want? Or what is it that...
We don't want the overdevelopment of the property on the corner.
You don't want that, you don't want any development on the corner.
He's asking for impervious coverage, he's asking for every setback, he's asking for a variance on every setback, 100% of the setbacks he wants a variance on. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to address the amount of traffic that hasn't even been stated that they're going to pump on our road here. You know, there's seven out of eight houses that are here opposed to the project, as he says here. Vic's garage was not an impact on the neighborhood, other than the store. When he bought the building, he painted it green so it looked the way it looked, so he could come in here and get this project. Just stating the facts, so that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other comment from the audience? You said you had...
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, even though we're not addressing the lighting here, that's a planning issue. Part of the reason that we laid this out the way that we did is to create or have the building as part of a buffer for the lighting, for the noise, for the smells from the gas canopy. That's why we tried to stick that as close to the intersection of Over Rocker and 44 as possible. We are actually increasing some of the setbacks from where the pumps are and the existing buildings are along Over Rocker. The existing building is, I don't have a dimension right here, but very close to the property line, so we're actually pulling those back and increasing from what is currently there. And also with the noise, again, there was a service repair garage that was currently there. Again, we're not going to have that anymore, so any impact wrenches and things like that that were, you know, creating more noise from a repair garage is obviously no longer going to be there. So just wanted to address a couple of those, even though some are planning issues.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's... Yeah, there's, there's a, a lot here, and, um, some of these are relevant to zoning and, and some are mart, but we have a lot to sort through. I took a, a brief scan of the, um, two things that have been submitted by, um, Mr. Olson and Mr. Adams. And both, both of them seem to me raise some important legal issues. And, um, I don't know how the board feels, but I would, I would like to adjourn this and give our attorney time to, you know, and there are a number of cases that are cited that, um, I think none of us, Paul perhaps does, but, um, the rest of us probably don't know anything about, so I would like you to sort through this. In particular, could you address this whole question of, um, whether it's a special use permit that's needed or a use variance? That, this is, to me, this is the, um, the, the gorilla in the room. And, uh, in the meantime, we've got, um, just a lot of things to sort out. Um, if I, if I might ask, um, where is, where is this in the, um, planning board process?
Uh, we actually had our first meeting, our first public hearing last, uh, last month.
Okay.
And we are currently, um, looking to submit a letter to, um, um, pull our application from them for, uh, this current month, uh, while we work on the responses to some of the questions and some of the neighbors' comments during the public meeting.
You're not on for April, but you're?
No, we're not on for, I think it's March nineteenth is the next meeting. Uh, but we'll be, we'll be back on for April.
On for April, okay, okay. All right, now I just wanna get a sense of kind of where, where, where we are in this. Yes?
If I could ask, how many peop, if when you did your business study, you know, this is what we wanna put in, will it be a successful business? How many people did you expect to service in a day? Did you have a number like that?
Expected to sell around, um, two thousand gallons per day, at least.
Okay, so I need you to, I need you to.
On the gas.
I need you to break that number. How many people get so much gas? How many cars are you talking?
In an average, ten to twelve gallons per car. So if it is like two thousand, um, divided by twelve, probably two, I mean, two, around two hundred to two hundred and fifty cars maybe?
Per day?
Correct.
And when you have a convenience store, how much, I, for lack of a better, drive-by business, do you do on a convenience store where people aren't even stopping for gas? Do you have a number for that?
Convenience store and gas station works together. I mean, generally people come for gas. The gas is only an invitation for the people to come. So. So one who get the gas, they come in, shop in our place, that's what is generally happens.
Any other questions? If not, um, is there a motion to adjourn items number twenty and twenty-one? Let's, let, let's put it for next month, um, April thirteenth.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles, there is one. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, you have a good night.
Okay, all right. Um, now, we skipped over, uh, items. They're here. Okay, items number four. Um, the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. And looks like four, five, six is gonna be pretty similar, so can we?
That's correct.
Deal with them all at once?
We can.
Okay, good, all right.
There's also.
So if you would state your name, please?
My name is Paul Biker, I'm from Timely Signs in Kingston, New York.
Mr. Biker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Which, uh, location, there are three in your township, would you like to start with?
Right, okay, well, just, uh, for the record, we've got Four Tucker Drive, one fifty-nine Barnegat Road, and, uh, the Nine Mall Plaza, eighteen ten South Road.
Okay.
And, and I, I don't know if we've gotten over these, but basically, uh, it's a rebranding.
Yeah, they're fairly straightforward. Um, our client, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, is going through a, um, a logo change. Um, not a name change, not a buyout, takeover, or anything, just wanted to update their logo. Existing logo is about twenty years old. Um, this is a new look. Um, in all of locations, we are replacing signs that have been in place for a significant number of years. Um, in every circumstance, we are replacing these signs with a smaller version of what is currently in place. And we are not adding any additional signs. And in some cases, such as Nine Mall, we're actually removing signs.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Patty?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
I noticed on, on, I don't, on, a couple of them, you, you have ATM. And then on, on at least one, you don't have ATM.
Okay, let's take a look at that. Several of these applications were created, um, in conjunction with a design process that was ongoing with our client. And during that process, several of the submissions were submitted with ATM, others without ATM. Their marketing group couldn't decide whether it was obvious that it was an ATM, and many of these are freestanding ATMs, so it's, it's, um, many of them are like aside from the branch, however, for Arlington, it's behind the bank, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't mistake that. There's also some concern regarding whether or not we can have the words ATM on there. There was a concern about having a twenty-four hour versus just regular ATM. Our client could be persuaded either way if it's, if it's not a safety issue.
It, it didn't matter to me, I just found it curious.
Would you guys prefer consistency across all three?
No, at least not me.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's up to you. I, yeah, I would just say that I thought, um, you removed a lot of clutter from, from many of those. The little logos.
Always our goal, if we have an opportunity to change the signs, we want to clean up the place. A lot of these have been done at various times with different sign companies, and this is a twenty-two branch rebrand, which gave us the opportunity to, to go through and make everything consistent throughout the Hudson Valley.
Paul?
I don't have any questions.
Larry?
No.
Tony? Okay.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah?
Um, we're, I'm looking at the one on Tucker Drive. The ATM in the back of the building, does it say, where it says, um, four identical faces on four sides? Is this Hudson Valley sign gonna be on all four sides of this ATM?
The, the bran, the, the header panel?
Yes.
Around this? Yes, that replaces the existing signs all the way around.
It goes all the way around?
I believe it, yes, I believe it does.
As many times as I've used it, I haven't noticed that.
I can send, I can check tonight or send you some photos I have back at the office, I'm pretty sure that it does go all the way around.
So you wanna put ATM all the way around as well, or you'll scratch that?
No, 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 just, just the brand around the top. The rest is essentially a decorative wrap that covers up some of the older structures.
Yeah, but this one says ATM.
That one does say ATM, but not, the ATM will not, the word ATM will not appear on any other side of, of the structure itself, just on the header panel.
Okay. Um, a question has just come up on the, um, Tucker Drive.
Yes.
ATM facility. Is, is that header there gonna be illuminated?
I believe it is currently illuminated. Um, I have not been there at night, but, uh, the type of header that it is, um, would, would suggest illumination. It can either be illuminated or shut off. I believe it is currently illuminated, I can confirm that.
But this, this is the one, of course, that's behind the building.
Yeah, that, that particular ATM is not visible until you come around the, the structure of the building.
Yeah. Okay, um, any other questions? All right, so I, I think, um, we'll just treat, um, four, five, and six together, and if there are no further questions, and no questions from the audience, I guess, no?
I'm anxious.
Yeah. Okay, uh, in that case, um, I move that we close the public hearings for items four, five, and six.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. And now we come to Hertz.
Item one. At the end of the night.
Item seven, yeah.
Always item seven.
Seven, yeah. Okay. And this appears to be simply two signs that say Hertz.
That's correct. We're, we're, we're here at the request of Starlight Sign, we are their installation subcontractor for this project.
Okay. And, um, I, uh, I guess this is in part be, uh, because they, they've reconfigured the office.
Yeah.
And I guess the, the door now.
Right.
Faces north rather than east.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, so what they've, they've requesting a sign of similar size, um, as the one that is on the, the side facing the street, same type of sign, just a secondary wall sign.
Okay, any questions from the board on the Hertz?
Yeah, I would like to know what those four signs that say twenty-four seven are, are there for.
Four signs that say twenty-four seven.
Boy, I don't know if it showed.
They're on the porch.
Yeah, it didn't, it, they don't show up in any of the, uh.
Yeah, they're not there, but they are, I mean, they're on the site.
I believe those are directional signs, but I.
Directional to what? They say twenty-four seven, that's all they say.
Okay, I, I believe what that is, is if you, if you rent a car and you drop it off and the office is closed, you, you park it in one of those slots, and then you put the keys in a box someplace. I believe.
So are they signs or are they not sign?
Well, we can, we, we can ask Sarah to look and determine. I mean, we can go ahead and act on this particular.
Okay.
But if they, it, but if Sarah determines that there are signs that need approval, then they'll either have to, you know, get approval or, or go through it. No, okay, no. We, I, we, we had a memo from, from, uh, the zoning administrator, but it had to do with the wall signs. And I will, I'll, I'll simply ask her to have a look in the meantime. Any other questions about the Hertz? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, closed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience, I apologize for being late.
Well, we, we got through it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that brings us to the end of our public hearings, uh, so we can go back now for the deliberation. Do people want five minutes?
Very short break.
Okay, yes. So we'll, we'll stand in recess for five minutes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's resume the meeting. And we are now in the deliberation phase. And we have a number to do. And so I think in deference to the people that are patiently waiting, let's first consider item number 10. John and Maria Rautenstrauch, 7 Old Farms Road. A variance to allow proposed home addition to be located 14 feet from the side lot line, where 20 feet is required. It's a type 2 action. So there's no further environmental issue. There's nothing from the county. And in your packet, there's a staff report that goes through some of the facts and figures that have been submitted. I believe there's.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on that to hold our vote for 60 days.
Okay.
To review some of the information.
Okay. Yeah.
Not an adjournment, just we're not going to vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
This is which one?
We've closed the public hearing, so we have 60 days in which we have to decide. So actually, we could do it next month if we wanted. So let's just adjourn it to April. There was some questions raised about the dimensions of the lots. And I would like, and Brian would like, an opportunity to just.
Revisit the site.
Revisit the site, revisit the records on parcel access, and sort out what we've got here.
This is number 10, right?
This is number 10.
Mr. Chair, before we move on to that, I would just like to note for the record, the applicant, the neighbors to the applicant during the meeting did give me two cases and asked for review of those. And just to advise the board, one of the cases dealt with the issue of the conformity with the neighboring properties.
Right.
And was, stands for the proposition that if the proposal is out of conformity with the neighboring properties, it shouldn't be granted. And the other case applied to standard, it was a case dated from 1971 by the Court of Appeals, and it uses the old standard, so it's not really relevant to this court's. But just so that the board has that information.
Okay, but.
Those were the cases that were provided.
But you believe one of them is, the first one, is relevant?
Well, it stands for the proposition that if the board believes that this proposal is out of character with the neighborhood, then it shouldn't be granted. But that's the standard for every area variance. So it's nothing unusual in that way, but it does support that proposition.
Okay, oh, thank you, thank you. Is that something we should get a copy of, or?
I can provide the board copies with it if you would like, but I think it's a fairly generic proposition that every application that comes before the board needs. One of the things that the board considers is the conformity of the proposal with the neighborhood and the neighboring conditions, so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for updating us on that. Good. Okay, so there's a motion been made to adjourn the decision to the April 13 meeting.
Second.
Okay, may I second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzels? Okay. So we will take a hard look at this and revisit it in April. Okay. All right, then that brings us to item number three. This, the salsa restaurant, 2585 South Road. A variance to allow tenant sign of 40.77 square feet on a freestanding sign, where such a sign shall advertise the name of the center only. It's an unlisted action. There is an environmental assessment short form that's been completed. So I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the application at 2585 South Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I further move that the ZBA, based on the information submitted in the environmental short form, finds that the application at 2585 South Road will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any comments?
I have one.
Yep.
You know, it looks like we're probably going to grant this. Is there any way we can ask that if this is granted, they cease hanging their banners and their hanging their outside signs, which are out of compliance? I mean, they always have banners up, they always have freestanding signs up outside.
Do we have a temporary, do we have a temporary sign? Did they get a temporary sign permit for Sarah?
Yes.
I thought we were only allowed so many temporary signs. They have other signs out, they have easels, you know, in front of the restaurant and things like that. Can we try to get them to limit that? Because if they have another sign, they probably won't need that, I would think.
Okay, I'll ask Sarah to have a look at that. Okay, on the variance request itself, if there are no further comments. Christine, would you like to make the motion on this one?
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance in item number three. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Okay, the variance is approved. Okay, let's see, items. Let's see. Four, let's see, so we've got four, five, and six here. Okay, I can't even find them anymore.
Me neither.
That's what I just said. Where'd they go?
Yeah.
There.
There they are.
Okay. Should we do these one at a time, or? Yes, we should, okay. So, item four, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Fort Tucker Drive. Okay, there are three variances to allow a freestanding sign of 11 square feet, where a freestanding sign shall advertise the name of the shopping center only. This basically replaces the existing sign with a new one. A wall sign of 115.2 square feet, where one wall sign of up to 100 square feet is allowed. Okay, this is the change in the logo. And four signs mounted on an ATM where no signs are allowed. This is in the back. Okay.
I have one last.
This is an unlisted action. There's an EAF that's been submitted. So I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of evaluating the application at Fort Tucker Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I move that the ZBA finds on the basis of the information submitted in the EAF short form, that the proposal at Fort Tucker Drive will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Okay, Betty, you want to make?
Here's my question. Most of these already have variances when they were put up there. Why do they need, and they're putting up signs that are, in some cases, smaller than what's already there, then why do they need a variance? Is it because of the new code now says that if you take? No, can't be that. It doesn't matter. The variance goes with the property. So if they already have the variance and they're putting up something smaller, in some cases, why are they coming?
I don't know.
If there is a variance already on the property, then I don't believe that they should be flagged for an additional variance. I don't think they should, that's something that the planning department, I would think, if there's an existing variance on record for the property. When they go to put up the new signs, that should, so. I don't know these specifics about these properties. We can certainly look into it.
My guess is that the, certainly for Hudson Valley Credit.
There must be a reason that they're here, but.
Those signs have been there probably long before the.
When the building was.
Well, the code, but the code revisioncy was in 2007.
But the.
So the sign requirements may have changed.
Oh, I'm sure they did. They changed since then as well.
Right.
So if, for example, the prior code allowed a 200 square foot sign and they had a 250 square foot sign, that's a variance of 50 feet. If the new code allows a whatever X sign and there is, they're getting, it's technically a different variance. So it would be, if the code regulations had stayed the same, then I can see that they wouldn't need a new variance. But if they've changed in terms of the quantity of what's allowed, then they're seeking actually a different variance than what was on the property. But I can't speak to these particular ones because I don't know when the code changed for these signs.
If they use variance for 115.2 square feet for Tucker, I mean, as compared to what they're, you know.
Yeah. My guess is some people just come in and get a new variance anyway, just to make sure.
Okay, so then she must, she must have.
Oh, okay.
So the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we've taken care of all the environmental things. Betty, you want to make the motion on number four?
Yeah, sure. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based upon a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, I ask the board to adopt as findings the determinations that is found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzels? Item number five, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, 159 Barnegat Road. A variance to allow two signs mounted on a freestanding ATM, where only one wall-mounted sign on the principal structure is permitted. Again, this is an unlisted action. wall-mounted sign on the principal structure is permitted. Again, this is an unlisted action. So I move the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the application at 159 Barnegat Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cousles? I move that the ZBA determines, based on the information in the enclosed EAF short form, that the proposal of 159 Barnegat Road will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cousles? There's a, a staff report in the packet recommending that this be approved, so. Art, you want to do this one?
Sure. I move, excuse me, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve item number five, or, yeah, five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, item number six, again, Hudson Valley Credit at 1810 South Road Mall, the Nine Mall Plaza, a variance to allow signs on a freestanding ATM. This is an unlisted action. I think someplace in their application, there's, I don't have a.
No, that one, interesting enough, did not have a EAF.
Did they submit one somewhere? Should have.
Not in my packet.
Okay.
Have one?
Oh, very good. Okay. I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of environmental review of the application at 1810 South Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cousles? I move that the ZBA finds, based on information submitted in the EAF short form, that the application, or the proposal at 1810 South Road will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and you very recently got a staff report recommending approval of this. Okay, I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cousles? Okay, item number six is approved. Okay, item seven, Hertz Corporation at 20 IBM Road, a variance to allow a second wall sign where only one wall sign of up to 50 square feet is allowed. And I simply note that each of the signs is 18 square feet, so the combination of the two is actually less than what would be allowed for a single sign. It's an unlisted action. I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the application at 20 IBM Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? I move that the ZBA determines, based on the information in the enclosed EAF short form, that the proposal at 20 IBM Road will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cousles? Okay, and there's a, a staff report in your packet recommending that the application be approved. Paul, do you want to?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. Decision is on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. Approving the variance, the board adopts as findings determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second. Uh.
All those in favor?
Oh, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Kind of, you know, timing is everything here.
I guess.
It's ours, aren't we?
You break, break the rhythm and we just go to pieces here. Okay, item number eight, Matthew Johnson, 190 North Grand Avenue, a variance to allow home addition to be located 12.5 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. A type-two action. And this is a case where the addition is actually going to be further away from the lot line than the present house is. Okay, there's a staff report recommending that the application be approved. So Larry, you want to do this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item nine, uh, eight. Oh, I'm sorry, set forth in item eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion been, to approve been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, item number eight is approved. Item nine, Michael and Adrian Haas at Four Claudia Lane, a variance to allow home addition to be located 11 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Type-two action. And in your packet, there's a staff report recommending that this variance be approved. There are no other comments? Um, uh, let's see, Phyllis, you're, you're an alternate here. Okay, Tony, you want to?
I think that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, results of site visits by board members and staff report. Approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, item nine is approved. Okay, item 10, we have, we are adjourning the decision. Okay, item number 11, Daniel DeWitt, 7 East Dogwood Drive, a variance to allow a fence of up to six feet in height within a front yard where the maximum height was three and a half feet. This is a type-two action. There is a staff report that I have not had an opportunity to look at. Um, okay, um, all right, uh, okay, um, okay, you can skim through the staff report. One of, one of the things that I was struck by in the testimony is the fact that it's been there for a long time. Um, okay, um, okay, any comments, discussion on this?
Yeah, you point out that it's been there for a while and the topography of the area, the neighbor's property that the fence borders on is higher than the applicant's property. It's set back some feet from the roadway, so there's really no visitation, visibility problems that are an issue that I think the statute really is meant to address.
Yeah. And apparently, the, the fence does make good neighbors. They seem to be able to deal with it, so.
It's not white.
And it's, yes. And, and I do like the fact that the top of it is open. I mean, that, I think, helps a lot. Okay, um, so if there's no further discussion on this, Christine, you want to, I guess it's around to you.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 11. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of this.
Not.
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 Not. So, let's see.
How shall I?
Well.
Well, now, whether an undependable change in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties, I don't, I don't see that. It's been there for a significant period of time and it doesn't appear to create any problem. There's, as I said, the site lines are not disturbed. For number, whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, I don't see what other things there are besides fences to, to make barriers. The request is substantial. It's twice what's, what's allowed in the code, but I don't see that it's a big import in this time. And again, I don't see it have a adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Certainly was created, self-created. They put the fence up themselves, but that's not a barrier.
Okay, so with those, with those as the findings, yes.
I think I would have had issues with, had someone come in and complained, but the neighbor that bordered the fence apparently has no problem with it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, uh.
And it certainly keeps the snow from each other's driveways.
Well.
Maybe even leaves, right?
Right. Hey, I could go for that. No. Okay, uh, the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. If there are no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, item number 11 is approved. Item 12, John and Mary Ann Clark, 2 Jordan Street, three variances to allow proposed home addition to be located 39 feet from the front lot line where 100 feet is required, a rear yard setback of 46 feet where 75 feet is required, and a lot coverage of 8.7 percent where 4 percent is required. Uh, this is a type-two action, and there's a staff report here, um, that recommends that the variance be granted. Okay.
You know, here's a guy with half an acre, not even half an acre, sitting in a four-acre zone.
And he's not alone. I mean, that whole.
Little neighborhood.
That whole little neighborhood, all those lots are almost exactly the same. I have no idea, somebody's hand slipped, I think, when they did the rezoning and, and, you know. It seems to make no sense, but what he's proposing to do is.
Who owns all the land around that neighborhood? Mountain Alvernia? Who else?
It's pretty much it.
I, I think.
That's probably why.
Yes, that's why.
Yeah, okay. Okay, uh, it's a type-two action. As I said, there's a staff report that recommends this be approved. If there's no other discussion, Betty, do you want to do this?
Do you have to do the EAF first?
No, it's a type-two.
Oh. Okay. I was looking at it, that's why. Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 12. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. And I ask that the board adopt as findings the determinations as found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve, item number 12 made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, 13 has been adjourned. 14, Marist College, 3399 North Road, a variance to allow a front yard setback of 40 feet or 50 feet is required. There was an environmental determination. The planning board issued a negative declaration in January. In this, your packet, there's a staff report recommending that this variance be granted. Any questions, comments?
Smallest variance I've ever seen.
And.
That's not their fault.
And it's all because of DOT.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Art?
Sure. I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item 14. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one recusal. Okay. Um, okay, items, wait, item 15 is adjourned.
Everything else is adjourned.
16, everything else is adjourned.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, we're going to pay for that.
Yep, we are.
Um, it, yeah, let me, let me just raise as a, as a kind of question, suggestion, given all of the adjournments, and some of these could get fairly complicated. Would, does the board wish to have a second meeting?
In which month?
Probably have to be next month. Um, so that we would have time to really.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. I think it's fair to the applicants, too.
Okay, well, I will, I will pursue that. And we'll see if, we'll see if we can find some of the applicants that are willing to come. Is, is Monday still a good day, or should?
I don't think you can do that. If we've adjourned during the public hearing, you said that you were adjourning tonight's.
April 3.
No, 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 we would have, I think the new, any of the new applicants.
The new material bill would be on a different night.
Okay.
Not the current, the adjourned items have to be, because you adjourn to a date.
Oh, you're, you're absolutely right.
So what you would do is, when the new people, whoever's applying for the, what month are we in, March? For the April meeting, the new applicants could be set to a different night, or not.
Okay.
Well, we have to talk to him because obviously I'm giving people a date, they come in, you know, a deadline. I mean, I don't know.
You're going earlier than.
Do you have any applications, Sandy, that have already come in for April 13th?
I have one.
So that's one that would be on April 13th. The rest of them, maybe you could schedule them when they come in for another date.
Why not, why not just have a special meeting for the big one, like?
We already told them.
Because you've already told, yeah.
Yeah, we've said it.
It's already in public.
Although, is, is there any reason why we couldn't contact a couple of the applicants?
You've told, in essence, you've told the public.
The public.
That that's when the meeting is going to be adjourned to. Your only alternative would be to briefly continue it on that night and then continue it on another night, but I don't think that the public or the applicant would.
No, no, that's, that's, okay, let's, let's, I, let me, let me talk with Neil and Sandy and Brian and.
Well, it's either going to work or it's not. So, I mean, if there's a, if there's a date that's available. So, I mean, if there's a date that's available-
Yeah.
I think that would be a good idea. If there's not, then, then we have to slug through it.
I mean, I, to me, the, the date that would make, make most sense would be just the next week. So that'd be April 20th. Is that?
Well, yeah. I mean, for new staff?
Right. That gives people extra time, so I don't think it would, it wouldn't negatively-
Would you have two separate notices, or can you do it at one?
I, I don't know, because, you know, we had, I, I haven't asked them.
Sandy, what's the cutoff date for the next meeting?
26. I mean, we have time, obviously.
Maybe no one else will come in?
Yeah, lucky.
Okay, well, we, we, we will, we will consider that. And if we can, if we can do it, I, I think it might make some sense, because if everybody comes in on the 13th, we're going to be busy.
Right.
And, um, you, you're going to have several things. Yeah, we, we need to pick up information, but you're-
If everyone leaves, there are packets. For the one application, I think there's sufficient copies for everyone. For the material that was submitted for Mr. Hoffnagle, there's only a few copies here, so I would suggest that I just give them to Sandy and then she'll distribute them.
Okay. Good. And then, for the next meeting, we may need to have an executive session with the attorney-client.
We may. I can provide the board with information ahead of time, and the board will be able to make that determination as to whether they need executive session for any of the materials submitted.
Okay. Now, anything that you gave us in that form would, would have to be public. So is that a problem? Or can, or can you send us?
It's an attorney-client memo. I believe if I'm providing legal advice, I think that's exempt from the FOIL rules.
Okay.
I will confirm that nothing that should not be made public is made public, and it's provided in a form appropriate.
Okay, okay. Because I, I know for some of these cases, a number of us may have some just pointed questions, and it'd be nice if we, you know, we could have a, a, a learning experience here when it comes to zoning law. Okay. The last item, the planning board has requested lead agency on Beacon Residential, 297 Violent Avenue. I have no idea what that is.
What is that?
Where is that?
Like, personal firehouse?
Is that by, what number Violet?
297, it is up past Hudson River?
297 Violent-
Right by the firehouse, right? Yeah. It's the only apartment that's right there.
Where the Flars was?
Next door.
I can't help but note that the last time we approved lead agency for the town board, it was for the Malabar case, and look what happened there. So, I, I have no objection to allowing the planning board to be a lead agent. So anybody have any?
So moved.
Okay.
It's hard when you don't know what the project is.
All, it has nothing to do with the project. All it's doing is giving the planning board the, to be lead agency, to do the seeker process.
The, uh, the rationale for making the planning board lead agent for many of these things is that they have the town engineer and a number of others to help them evaluate. And, and we don't.
And that's, that's great. If there was a way that we got more information on the project than Beacon Residence or whatever it was, that would be helpful.
Exactly.
You can all, well, you can come to the office and try to just get it to you. And watch, watch the minutes.
Well, except that doesn't help us right, right now.
Focus every question on each variance. You know what? They should be able to answer that, too. Well, John Adams and-
Okay, there, there's a motion to approve the planning board being lead agent. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're at the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned. Oh, did we, did we do that? Okay, I, I'm sorry. Forget the adjournment. On the motion to allow the planning board to be lead agency, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I meant no vote to adjourn.
Okay. No, we're just going to declare that. We're done? Okay, so, um, yeah. Okay, the meeting-